All right, we'll call the meeting, can you hear me? Check. We'll call the meeting to order at 6:01. Could we please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we get a roll call, please?
Mayor Lance.
Here.
Vice Mayor Walter.
Here.
Councilmembers Bagby. Councilmember Bagby. Councilmember Cruz. I don't think they can hear us.
Councilmember Cruz, can you hear us?
She's not hearing us.
There is no audio. Thank you, Councilmember Cruz. I heard you on that.
Yeah, they're talking, they can hear each other, but they can't hear us, I think.
It's the Samson, he said.
Test, test. Melanie, can you hear yet? Nothing. I'll bet she could.
Melanie, can you hear us?
Now we can.
Testing. Testing.
Yes.
They heard that one.
Thank you.
Whatever that was.
Okay, so we'll proceed with roll call. Councilmember Bagby.
Okay, so we'll proceed with roll call. Councilmember Bagby.
Yes.
She's not hearing it again.
You gotta turn that off, yeah.
No, I heard, can you hear me now?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Okay, I heard two hands for the first time, sorry.
Councilmember Cruz.
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Paula.
Might need to turn it up. When people speak on Zoom, I don't know, we'll see how it does. Okay, sorry. Now that we're squared away. Let's see. Report out of closed session. Jose?
Mayor, the council did consider an item under closed session today. It was labor negotiation with your bargaining groups. Staff was given direction, no reportable action was taken.
Thank you, sir. Conflict of interest declarations?
And I don't know if the microphone is working, Councilmember Cruz or Councilmember Bagby, can you hear me? Okay, perfect. Sorry, we weren't getting the microphone here.
Is there any conflicts of interest to the agenda?
Yes, there is one. Councilmember Cruz, there is that item related to the Alexander Valley healthcare.
Oh, yes, for later on. I just meant for the summer. But yes, the Alexander Valley health.
I recuse myself during that discussion.
And Mayor, that is due to the location of her home being close to that project.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Councilmember. Okay, agenda review, any changes or deletions?
Mayor, members of council, no changes to the agenda this evening.
Great. Okay, moving forward to public comments. Any person wishing to speak to the city council on any item not listed on the agenda may do so at this time. Members of the public have the right to speak on any item on the council agenda at the time the item comes up for consideration. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the city council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda. Per city council policy, three minutes are typically allotted to each speaker. Do we have anyone in our audience who would like to speak on anything not on our open session agenda? Seeing no hands, do we have anyone in the public? Jill? Thank you. Wow. First time for everything. All right, moving forward, proclamations and presentations. First up is the student liaison. Guadalupe, please.
Thank you, Mayor Lance. All right, so the boys' basketball team beat St. Vincent's on Friday, fifty-seven to forty-seven, and lost to Urban High School last night in the section semifinal, fifty-six to fifty-four, a very close game. I'm happy to announce that spectators are once again allowed. Although, and although the boys lost, they will be playing next Tuesday to start the NorCal State Tournament. Congratulations to Dylan Moller, NCL first boys' basketball MVP. Congratulations to the Cloverdale Wrestling Team as well for a great showing at the NCS Wrestling Championship. As for clubs, FFA will be having a chapter meeting this Thursday at six fifteen in the West Gym. The meeting theme is dodgeball. Starting February twenty-fifth in Room Two at lunch, Bring Change to Mind will have a meeting. This club is run by Team Success and its purpose is to end stigma around mental health. This is an amazing cause and a great way for students to earn community service hours on campus. Cloverdale Connect, a local community paper, is looking for a student who would be interested in providing a column each month to the paper letting the public know what's happening, what's important to students, spotlighting exceptional students in academics, sports, and more. This is also community service learning credit. Students who are interested can go to the front office to receive more information. Financial aid applications are due on March second for seniors. You can see Ms. Ulrich. If you have any questions or need assistance filing your application, you can also speak to her to find out more about available scholarships. And lastly, we will be having Mr. Eagle, which will be held on March fifteenth, and I will provide more information as it comes. Thank you.
Thank you, Guadalupe. If you're not familiar with Mr. Eagle, it's definitely a sight to see. And so if you're looking for a night of entertainment, is a good word for it, good laughs, that's a good place to be. All right, moving on to C two, a proclamation in appreciation to Commissioner Reese Foxen and honor her for her many contributions to the Sonoma County Library and the Cloverdale Branch Library. David, do you want to say anything before I read the proclamation, or?
Thank you, Mayor, for the opportunity to introduce Reese Foxen. Reese has been an absolutely wonderful representative for Cloverdale on the Sonoma County Library Commission. It's with disappointment that she's retiring, but she has committed a significant amount of energy to the library system and in particular, our Cloverdale branch. It's been a tremendous pleasure to work with her as part of her role as a library commissioner, and I know she'll continue to be active in the Cloverdale community. And kind of an announcement that if there's any of you who'd like to step into the big shoes of Ms. Foxen, we are recruiting for a library commissioner to take her place. So if you're interested, feel free to contact me. You can also visit our website where we have additional information about the role of being a library commissioner. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. I will read the proclamation. A proclamation of the city council of the city of Cloverdale, appreciation to Commissioner Reese Foxen and honor her for her many contributions to the Sonoma County Library and the Cloverdale Branch Library. Whereas on June twenty-fifth, two thousand fourteen, the Cloverdale City Council adopted Resolution Number zero four nine two zero one four, formally appointing Ms. Reese Foxen to the Cloverdale's Library Commission. Commissioner Foxen joined the Library Commission in two thousand fourteen as part of a new commission created by a revised joint powers agreement and made it her mission to support the commission in its role as a productive and supportive oversight body. On May twenty-fifth, two thousand sixteen, the city council adopted Resolution Number zero four two dash twenty sixteen, reappointing Ms. Reese Foxen to a four-year term where she has continued to serve. Commissioner Reese Foxen was the chair of the Sonoma County Library Commission from July twenty eighteen through July twenty twenty, leading the commission through crucial changes and events including the successful recruitment of a permanent library director, the expansion of library services in response to the passage of the Measure Y sales tax, and the beginning of the COVID-nineteen pandemic. Commissioner Foxen embodies a servant leader approach to governance, bringing not only her vast experience and ability to her role as a commissioner, but also a sense of humility and curiosity to all she does. Commissioner Foxen served on two Sonoma County Library sales tax campaigns, and Commissioner Foxen is a staunch supporter of diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts in society and at the library, and authored or supported multiple measures, actions, and statements made by the library to recognize its role in leading society to greater inclusivity and equity. Commissioner Foxen has a lifelong history as a librarian, starting at age four when her grandmother brought her to work at the Family Grocery Store and Lending Library, and has been an advocate for the Sonoma County Library and in particular, the Cloverdale Branch Library. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the city council of the city of Cloverdale does hereby proclaim its heartfelt appreciation to Commissioner Reese Foxen and honor her for her many contributions to the Sonoma County Library System and the Cloverdale Branch Library, dated February twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two, so ordered myself. Reese?
Yes, Todd.
Do you have anything you would like to say before I let everyone else go? You're the person of the hour.
Well, I just want to thank you all for giving me the opportunity to do this, to be part of the library, to contribute to not only the system itself, but to our community. And I just appreciated the opportunity to do that. Thank you.
Councilmember Bagby, you want to go first?
Oh, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I just am really grateful to have an opportunity to thank Reese yet again for her continued service and her continued efforts to retire. It sounds like this one might actually stick. But I just want to call attention to our fourth whereas, where, you know, not only is she our library commissioner from Cloverdale, but she chaired that commission during a really critical time, and her leadership was absolutely essential in helping get the sales tax renewal and also in setting a tone, a new tone for the board and bringing in a new director to our Sonoma County Libraries, who's just an exemplary individual. So the community of Cloverdale owes Reese Foxen a great debt of thanks, as well as the entire regional library system. Her leadership was crucial at a very critical point. And yeah, she has our thanks and our gratitude. So thanks for giving me an opportunity to say thank you to Reese yet again for all that she has done for the community of Cloverdale and the whole regional library system.
Councilmember Cruz.
Yes, thank you, Reese, for everything that you have done and everything you continue to do for Cloverdale. I understand the importance of libraries and especially what it has meant for all of Cloverdale during this COVID time. I've only known you for five years, and those have been very fruitful. I appreciate your openness and especially your desire and engagement with children and especially with the Latino community. Thank you so very much. This is, these are big shoes to fill, but we look forward for someone to be mentored by you. So one more time, a big call for the community of Cloverdale. We need to have a commissioner. We need, you don't need to be a specialist on anything or a librarian. You just need to have the heart and you need to have the time. Not too much time, because Reese just gave all the time. So don't get scared by the amount of things that she did. But we do need to have representation. We have one of the greatest libraries in Sonoma County, and we have been pivotal in very many projects and very successful ones. So thank you, Reese, and please don't go away. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Paula.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to, without repeating everything, I agree entirely with Councilmember Bagby and Councilmember Cruz. Reese, you know, thank you so much. You've been invaluable. You've really stepped up, and as a commissioner, you represented our area so well. It's going to be really hard to replace you. Now that you're in retirement, you're going to have a lot more free time, and hopefully you're going to stay engaged. And certainly if you do get where you have more free time than you need, we will help you fill that. So keep that in mind, tuck that away, and please stay in touch. Thank you so much.
Reese, I'd just like to say thank you. I feel like this is a deja vu moment. And I'm not going to reiterate what everyone else has said, but I do appreciate, and I know the community appreciates the work that you've done on every nap, so thank you.
And Reese, I'd like to say also a heartfelt thank you for all you've done. It's been a pleasure working with you, and I look forward to you rising out of retirement for the third time, because idle hands are not good for you. So thank you so much for everything you've put into our library system. Okay, moving on, C three. Reese Foxen with a Cloverdale library presentation. David?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, just to introduce Reese Foxen as our library commissioner, this was an opportunity for Ms. Foxen just to provide an update on all things having to do with the Sonoma County Library and the Cloverdale Library Branch. So Reese, this is your opportunity to provide the council and community an update on our library system.
Okay.
I need to make your panelist, Reese. Hold on just a minute.
Okay.
Now, doing this, Reese, means that if I change your panelist, it might kick you out of the meeting, so I'm going to promote you now. There you go. Okay, go ahead.
All of them. Yeah, when I went on the commission, I made up my mind that I was going to give as much as I could. There were a couple, three people who were still working, and I knew that if I did a little more, then they'd be able to do it. And I, I mean, I've enjoyed every minute of it and am looking forward to mentoring the next commissioner as we go. So first slide, yes. Okay. I'm going to start with my original info. I've gone through and done an assessment of areas, and each one will have its at knee dressing over the next few years. Cloverdale, I think some of you will remember, in I think it was twenty fifteen, got a total refresh inside and it changed the whole thing, upgraded it. Roseland Library is the newest library. It started out as just a foot in the door, sharing a space with the Boys and Girls Club, and that meant they had to shut down at two o'clock in the afternoon. They couldn't be open in the evenings. They couldn't have Saturdays, so they were very, very limited, and it took them, oh, three, four years. Yeah, about that, five years maybe, to find another space. And they just opened up, they leased this space, opened it up, and it is slightly smaller than Cloverdale's library, and it serves probably four times as many people. So they are continuing to negotiate and to work and to partner with Santa Rosa. And Santa Rosa recently asked them to be part of their new community center that they're doing at Hurd and Dutton Avenue. Going to have a pool, the fire department will be there, there will be a community center as well as a library, and I don't know what else. And they also gave them ten million dollars to work with, which was very nice of them. They're turning out to be good partners, much like Cloverdale has been over the years. So that's something to look forward to in the system. The other thing is, I think all of you remember with the fires, that Los Gilicos was, you know, right down to the edge, and even parts of it were burned, and that happened to be where the Sonoma County Historical Archives was housed in a building that leaked. They had buckets all over the place, et cetera. And people were absolutely terrified that the building would burn down and we'd lose all our history in that move. And so they have worked hard over the last year and a half and finally found a place on West Wind Boulevard out near the airport, which hopefully is a safer place. And they've gotten the archives totally moved over there, so you can see the difference between the old building and the new building. And location, Los Gilicos versus near the airport, so I think it's definitely a step up and something that was very, very needed. Now they're working on finding a more permanent place. And Cloverdale Regional Library, this is an old picture, doesn't even have the apple in it. But what I wanted to talk about is Claire McGowan bequeathed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I think it was, and the library is going to use that to redo their patio area, and that's what's behind that fence or wall there. And they're going to expand it a little and open it up so events can be held out there comfortably, so people can study and read out there comfortably. Right now, it's kind of narrow, things are kind of awkward, and they're going to really make it a nice place. I tried to get a plan for it. I remember seeing a plan for it, but I never could locate it. So it's just something that we've got to look forward to, and they're going to be starting that very soon. So that's something that Cloverdale will look forward to, and it will be a nice, nice upgrade to our library. Okay, next, something. So budget. Okay. I'm sure we have six to work with. And that means we serve four hundred and eighty-eight thousand people here in Culver, in Sonoma County. There are over two hundred and twenty-eight thousand cardholders. And in order to do this, there are sixteen different locations, plus the Biblio Bus, which I'll talk about more about later. And there are two hundred to two hundred and fifty employees involved in all of this. And they hold the libraries, and I figured it out today, and I was kind of stunned, and I had to double-check my figures to make sure I got it right. But it's eight hundred and eight hours a week that the libraries are open in Sonoma County, and that's in one week. That's how many hours they're open. Plus, there are a couple of stops out in Sea Ranch and Stewart's Point with a partnership that we have with Mendocino County that gives them access to a library and what the bus, the Biblio Bus, is doing now. So they do quite a bit with the money they get. Part of that, you know, comes from property tax and part of that is from the sales tax. Now, the sales tax, and I know I'm repeating myself, but we're going to have to come up to a renewal on it, so you might as well have the information. It's a one eighth of a cent sales tax. That means for every eight dollars in sales tax money that you have to pay. that you have to pay, we get one cent. So just keep that in mind when the library, I don't know what it's gonna be called, but Measure Y comes up next time. We've increased our Wi-Fi hotspot. So every library, if you wanna go up and sit down outside, you can take your computer with you and it'll work. You can drive up in your car and sit in your car and do your work. So, and they're looking to expand that further. They're working on partnerships with other entities and they're working to expand that further. So it goes out and, you know, I don't know, mile or two, which means all of Cloverdale. But they're trying to expand that so that people have even greater access. And along with that, of course, they added more Chromebooks to it because people, there are some people people need to informate the way that another thing that they're going to be doing, hopefully the first week in July, is open all the libraries on Sundays. Until this point of time, it has just been Santa Rosa that has been open on Sundays. But that is one of the most popular days in Santa Rosa. And they would like to expand that to the rest of the libraries. So they're aiming for Sundays in July and from that point on, and Cloverdale will definitely be part of that. And that means they're gonna be opening those doors. So that's what they're gonna be doing with the bus, with the money. Also, with the Measure Y bus, the money, we bought what they call a bibliobus. And this is a picture of its first day in Cloverdale. It was their first visit, November 4th. I was there. Marda was there. I think Kevin came by and stopped for a few minutes. It's just a fantastic thing. They have books. I mean, typical. They have a few books, not as many as the old buses used to have, but they still carry the books and they carry a nice variety of books. It makes it, enables them to go out into areas that people live in that have difficulty getting into one of the local regional libraries. And expands the service immensely. It goes out onto the West County, over the hill. It goes out into East County. It also enables us to have more computers and Wi-Fi because again, wherever they park, within a distance, short distance of that, you can drive up and use your computer or you can walk up and use your computer. And they have computers onboard that they do lend out to people. So it's not just a one-way thing. There's also a monitor on the side of the bus, right behind, that's me standing there that day, right behind my head that they can use during classes and programs and events that are going on. And it's available for community events and programs. You can go online and register it and request that it come. And that's a picture of one of the Healdsburg events that's going on. It was the only one I could find. So anyway, yes, the bibliobus, they are seriously looking at getting a second one that will, this one's a hybrid. They're looking, seriously looking at getting a second one that will be all electric. As people have really, really appreciated the access that this gives and the interaction that it can create with community at some sort of event or, or program or something that's going on. So, you know, that's something to look forward and that's thanks to Measure Y. I mean, we wouldn't have had that if, if it weren't for Measure Y. So again, Measure Y is coming up. Be seriously thinking about how you're going to do it and help us get the money. Okay, next. And now to a much more serious topic. And that's equity and diversity. Now I don't know how many of you know, but in, at Sonoma Valley, over in Sonoma, at that library there, we have a black librarian and she came to work one morning to see the N-word painted on the side of the library. And she took time and got it cleaned off before too many people got there. And then in Sabasopol, they have a program with teens and they were talking about, you know, what do you want to talk about? What's important to you? And it was a Black Lives Matter issue that came up. So they decided to make a banner for it. And they put the banner on the side of the library and it was torn down. So they made another banner. And actually, they've made several banners, but they made another banner and they put that one up. And it was torn down and burned. And this is here in Sonoma County. And it, to me, is totally unacceptable to do that. Now this quote is one that's taken from the 2017 inclusivity statement and it was reiterated in the resolution that the commission passed last month, or this month, February. And I was happy that it was at my last meeting, 2022. We, during the course of my being there, made a resolution for immigrants. We passed a resolution supporting DACA Dreamers. And this is all important. We have to deal with it. We have to look at ourselves. We have to look at how we interact in the community. And we have to look at our white privilege. And I'm saying "our" because I'm a nice old white woman. Very, very long has seen tons of things happen that are just inexcusable. I mean, my mother was, I always, when I'd go do diversity things, it'd be the biggest, I call her the biggest bigot I knew. But in any case, she was also the most generous woman. We've added a couple of programs. One is called Read BIPOC Book Club and the other is called the Queer Book Club. So, you know, we're doing things. We're hiring more diversity in the, in the staff. The commission needs to be more diverse. I would love to see, and it was one of the things that I was striving for, was to have a, somebody representing diversity. I did. I mean, I'm gay and I'm a woman, so that's diverse. But I would like to see Latinx representatives as well. Anyway, so be thinking about it because it's something that we need to deal with and we need to think about and we need to go on. So I wanna thank you for giving me the opportunity to serve Cloverdale Inc. I wanna thank you for giving me the opportunity to be part of the Sonoma County Library. Like the resolution said, I started when I was four years old and this is a wonderful end to 76 years of working and playing in libraries. And I just wanna thank you. And I would be more than happy to mentor the next commissioner and to work with them and help whoever it is, learn what it's all about and become comfortable with it. So thank you very much and thank you sincerely for the opportunity.
Reese, that was beautifully done and I can't thank you enough. I'm gonna go around with the council members if they have any comments. Councilmember Bagby, would you like to start tonight?
I couldn't hear what you said, Todd.
I was waiting for Councilmember Bagby to say, any comments or anything? Okay, Councilmember Cruz, any comments?
Well, all I can say is I'm very proud to have a Cloverdale resident like Reese. And I can't say anymore because I'm gonna start crying.
Councilmember Paula?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanna again say thank you, Reese. You've done a fabulous job and you're just so appreciated and thank you for everything.
Just once again, Reese, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Reese. I'm gonna open up to the public for any public comment if anybody wants to make a comment on her presentation. Seeing no hands or anyone in the audience, we will move forward. Thank you again, Reese. That was great and I appreciate everything you've done for us.
C4 of Wine Country Presentation, the 211.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce Lisa Carano and Nicolette Winesweg with United Way of Wine Country. They're gonna provide a presentation on the 211 program. The 211 program is really, it's a, it's a vital information service that is managed by United Way and it helps connect residents in Sonoma County with, you know, tremendous and important vital information, particularly health and human service type information that's assisted a number of members of our community address some of the questions and issues around the COVID-19 pandemic. But they continue to be a resource for all the members of our community and tonight, both Lisa and Nicolette are gonna, gonna walk us through a brief presentation providing us an overview of the 211 program. So with that, Nicolette and Lisa, if you wanna take, take, take it over.
Yeah, thank you so much, Mayor Lands and members of the Cloverdale City Council for having us here tonight to talk about 211 and United Way and we really appreciate your time. So I am gonna go ahead and share my screen here. All right, so, um, my name is Nicolette Winesweg and I am the Vice President of Community Impact at United Way of the Wine Country. I'm hoping that you guys are able to see just the full PowerPoint, 211 Sonoma screen. Is that correct?
No, we have the PowerPoint screen at this point.
No, okay. One second.
There you go, it's coming through now.
All right.
Nicolette, can we see your screen now? Can we just maximize the presentation? It should be good now.
Okay, you can see it. Everything's good. Awesome. Sorry, I'm working on like three screens here, so.
Maximize, do a slideshow on your PowerPoint?
You, you see it maximized?
No, I think we can. Nicolette, if you can hit the PowerPoint on the bottom right, it'll start the whole presentation. There you go.
Can you see it now?
Not yet, it hasn't changed yet.
I'm so sorry. Hold on just one second. I apologize.
Don't worry, you're now the seventh member now. And for any members in the audience, the presentation is included in the
In a link to the agenda packet, so you can also view it that way.
All right, let's try it this way. If you're able to see that?
There we go.
All right. Awesome. I mean, we've been doing this for two years now. You'd think I would like have this together, but, um, all right, so back to it. So my name is Nicolette Winesweg, Vice President of Community Impact at United Way of the Wine Country and United Way of the Wine Country is the administrator of 211 Sonoma and also the administrator of 211 Mendocino, which just happened recently. But today we're here to talk about 211 Sonoma. So, um, United Way of the Wine Country has been in business for over 50 years now. We have a mission of lifting up family financial stability in our service area, which is Sonoma, Mendocino, Humboldt, Lake and Del Norte Counties. So sorry about that. For over 50 years, we've been working to support sustainable improvements to systems and services that benefit all residents in our service area. Our work is guided by the values of equity, inclusion, collaboration, integrity, accountability and transparency. So what is 211? The vision of 211 is to be the community's go-to resource when people need compassionate help navigating the services that they might need. We provide access to community health, social and disaster services. We provide help to residents of Sonoma County via phone, text and self-guided website search. And the text is a two-way text message and so folks are actually speaking with a live person. We are operating 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. 211 is available in over 150 languages, is free. And in addition to just providing access to health and human service referrals and information, it also serves as providing incident-specific information in coordination with local emergency services in times of disaster. And typically in the past, that was fires and floods and what we've seen over the past couple of years is that 211 has also been activated to provide information to our residents about the COVID-19 pandemic and everything that comes with that, including health information, vaccine information, and then also financial resources, food resources. We've seen, you know, a real lasting impact from COVID. So we, um, contract with a call center provider. Our call center is not located in Sonoma County. And there were several reasons that we had decided to do that. So prior to United Way taking over 211, 211 was run by the Volunteer Center of Sonoma County and had been around for over 50 years. United Way was a funder and a member of the steering committee. And when Volunteer Center went through their restructuring, they decided that 211 really didn't fit in their business model. But it really did fit in United Way's business model and United Ways across the country are typically administrators of 211. And so during their transition, we talked and we had taken it over. When they were running 211, they had a call center in Sonoma County housed within the county of Sonoma's facilities. And when we took over 211, we did a lot of thinking about keeping our staff local or contracting out with a different service provider and ultimately decided to contract with Interface Children and Family Services. They're located in Ventura County. They serve as the call center for over 30 counties, 211s in California. And that was one of the reasons that we decided to contract with them because they came with all of this institutional knowledge about the systems and training and staffing. And they also were not in Sonoma County. And what we were seeing is with all of the disasters that we were experiencing and the widespread, the widespread impact that it had on the people that lived here is that if we had staff members who were impacted by disaster, they wouldn't be able to come to work. They wouldn't be able to answer the phones and they wouldn't be able to provide the information to people that are, that are looking for that information that they need right now. And so we have been contracting with them since 2019 when we took over 211 and we feel like it's been a really great partnership. They brought a lot of really wonderful resources to us. We're part of a statewide network and really they've served as really great thought partners with us as well. All right, so how 211 works. 211 Sonoma helps connect our community with information. I already had said that. And via phone, so you can dial 211 and talk to somebody. You can text your zip code to 898-211 and have a live chat with them. There's also kind of this push text messaging that we use when we have information, generalized information to put out. So over the past two years with COVID, we have been pushing people to text COVID to 211-211. And as new information gets put out on health orders or vaccines or testing sites, it will be pushed out to the people who have subscribed. And we've had tens of thousands of people who have subscribed to that and so they're continuing to get updated information that way as well. And then we have a website, 211sonoma.org, that folks can use to kind of self-guide themselves through access to resources. One of the, the really wonderful things about 211 and one of the reasons that we had gotten involved in it is because it promotes equity and financial stability. It promotes equity in the sense that there are many ways to access the 211 service. It's free and confidential, available in over 200 languages. People can access it in the way that, that they feel comfortable. We know that, that reaching out for help is sometimes a very difficult thing. It's a very personal thing. And so we want our residents to be able to choose what's most comfortable for them. If they wanna pick up the phone and talk to somebody, they want a text message because they kinda wanna, you know, stay behind that screen or if they wanna, you know, guide themselves through. 211 also advances social and economic mobility by connecting our county's residents to resources that are available to them to help them become financially stable, provide them with food to put on the table with connections to rental assistance, with connection to mental health services. to mental health services, so that they're able to take care of themselves and go to work. And so we see 2-1-1 playing a role in helping Sonoma County residents find the help they need and ultimately creating stable families and advancing social and economic mobility in our community, which is one of our main focuses. So over the past two years since we've taken over 2-1-1, we've had about 61,000 contacts via text and phone, mainly phone. We've connected people to certain, you know, all services all over the county. Our top areas of need, which have remained fairly consistent since we've taken it over, is housing, food, income assistance, and obviously with COVID, healthcare. And the healthcare would be, you know, access to federally qualified healthcare clinics, vaccine sites, testing sites, general information about COVID and what's going on now.
Nicolette, I think you have about a minute and a half left for your presentation.
Absolutely. This is my last slide, and I just wanted to raise this up. One of the really wonderful things about our 2-1-1 Sonoma website, in addition to being able to search for services yourself, is the ability to go on and check out these interactive reports. And so we have a reporting function that's updated monthly, and it can be sorted and filtered based on location. So if you wanted to see specifically what calls are coming in from residents in the city of Cloverdale, you can check Cloverdale. You can sort it by language and gender, age, and it'll show you what the top needs are in the community of callers, and then what the actual top referral agencies are as well. And so it's a really great way of kind of keeping a finger on the pulse of what's going on and what's needed in the community. It also shows the percentage of met needs and unmet needs. And so we're able to go through and look at that and see if there's any unmet needs in the community and try and connect with agencies that are providing those services. And so I highly recommend that you guys check out 211sonoma.org and the reporting feature specifically. And with that, I want to offer my thanks again and my contact information. Should you have any questions, comments, anything, we would love to hear from you.
Well done. Let's start with the council. Councilmember Cruz, do you have any questions or comments?
Yes. Attorney Carreño, could you give us a little preview of how 2-1-1 was useful during the, you know, the heat of the pandemic?
Yes, actually, first, Nicolette, thank you for doing such a nice job with the presentation. Going back to when United Way became the Administrator for 2-1-1 Sonoma County, Nicolette particularly began working very closely with county leaders in the Health Services Department, the Human Services Department, the Office of Emergency Services, the Office of Resilience and Recovery. And through the development of response systems that evolved out of the lessons from 2017, one of the key improvements was the integration of 2-1-1 as a part of emergency and disaster response planning, and then disaster and response messaging. So from early in March, before we went into the pandemic lockdown mode, Nicolette particularly was involved with planning and communicating messaging that would be delivered through 2-1-1 platforms, through the website, through text and call center responses to callers and texters, and also through the push platform that Nicolette referenced during her presentation. So that's, I know that time is tight, but I'll just say that we're embedded in the emergency response, and we have been working with, meeting with, interacting with that system in the county for the entirety of the last over two years.
Councilmember Bagby?
No questions.
A quick comment. Thank you for the presentation, and certainly thank you for the service. It's something that's surely needed, and I know it's really appreciated. I'd just like to make a suggestion that if you have some sort of a brochure, that you get that to us so we can get that brochure maybe printed and get it out into the community, because unless people know about it, it's not going to be used to the maximum. So any type of literature you have that might help us get it out there, get the word out would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. We will do that. That is actually one of the big reasons why we were so grateful for this invitation tonight. We want to work more closely with the city of Cloverdale to serve the community up there, and we know that our partnership with you is essential to doing that. Thank you for that invitation.
And the brochure, we'd appreciate if it could be in both English and in Spanish. That would be very important. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Nicolette, very well done. We have a lot of information, and we appreciate everything you guys are doing. This is something I see growing to be very large in the next few years in our county. So thank you guys again.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on, D Consent Calendar. All items under Consent Calendar will be considered together by one action of the City Council unless any council member or member of the public requests that an item be removed and considered separately. There's being only one item.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move the approval of the consent calendar.
Second, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, that was a first by Councilmember Paula, second by Vice Mayor Walter. Could we get a roll call?
Councilmember Paula.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter.
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby.
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz.
Aye.
Mayor Lands.
Aye.
Thank you. E Communications. Council may be discussed at any time. Any written communications sent to the council members since the last council meeting, written communications to be discussed will be listed below if any.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I just wanted to note that we did receive a communication after the packet was published, and that was in regards to the Alexander Valley Wellness Center project, and that'll be covered in staff's presentation on that agenda item.
Thank you, sir. Okay, moving forward. F Public Hearing. Public hearing items will begin at the time shown or as close thereafter as possible to allow for completion of them. F1, adopting resolutions to approve an initial study and mitigated negative declaration for the Alexander Valley Wellness Center project approving a major design review and conditional use permit, and introducing for first reading by title only an ordinance approving a development agreement with Cofford Tower Family Medical Center pertaining to the development of the Alexander Valley Wellness Center. Is it David or Kevin or Jose?
And I think at this point, Councilmember Cruz, I know you were going to recuse yourself from this item.
Thank you, Councilmember Cruz. We will give you a call when we're back.
Okay, I can take over from there. Thank you, Jose. Mayor and council members, this is a consideration of the Alexander Valley Wellness Center for approval. What's being sought tonight is adoption of a resolution approving the environmental document, in this case was a mitigated NECD, which was completed and circulated with no comments received. Adoption of a resolution for a major design review and conditional use permit, and introduction of the ordinance by title only approving the development agreement. We did receive the letter from the Citrus Fair, as City Manager Kelly mentioned, and we can go into that. Just for a little agenda for this particular item, I'm going to go through a little bit of the background, and I'll be quick. And then we're going to ask Ms. Debbie Howell to come up, the CEO of Alexander Wellness, and give us a little update. And then we're going to turn it over to Matt Stromberg, who is the architect. And Jill, if you could be, okay. It's Matt.
Matt's on there.
Debbie's here. Okay, so just a little bit of background. It's been in the works for many years. It's been in our hands for two years, and we're really excited that it's in a position to have a final approval. It's going to be located on Lot B of Times Square, which is a 2.8 acre parcel, which is, the city is in the process of selling to the Alexander Valley Wellness. It's Zoned TOD, which requires a use permit for this type of use, and so that's one of the entitlements being sought. The structure is about 47,600 square feet, and it is three stories with the third story setback. And Matt can go into a little more detail about the design. It is a, it will function as a wellness center, but many other things, and maybe Debbie can elaborate on some of the things. We've heard primary care, pediatric care, dental, behavioral health, and we'll let Debbie elaborate on that if she wants to. Hours of operation are 8 to 7, Monday through Friday, although they indicated there will be a community room that will be available after hours and for special events on the weekends. Site improvements include frontage improvements on all four sides, extension of Washington Street from Healsburg Avenue to serve the project, a driveway between Lot B and Lot A of Times Square, which will be private and will provide access, 168 parking spaces, parklets, landscaping, and gardens, which I know Matt can talk about. The project was before the Planning Commission on February 1st, and they provided some comments that will be included as conditions of approval. So had to do with some lighting and also to a plan for the eventual installation of purple pipe and to be able to accommodate that when that is available to the site. That's all I have, Debbie. I don't know if you want to.
I think it's on, Jill.
Thank you, Kevin. Good evening, everyone. As you know, my name's Debbie Howell, and I'm the CEO at Alexander Valley Healthcare. It's great to be here and to be moving this project forward. It's been a long process, and we're very excited. This project is very diverse to meet our community needs of a diverse population. And I just want to start out by letting the council and the public know that Alexander Valley's primary services as the FQHC, a Federally Qualified Health Center, will be conducted on primarily the second and third floors of the facility, which is family medicine, behavioral health, dental services, and all the ancillary services that come with those departments. The first floor is going to be primarily dedicated to community services, which means that we will have other entities renting or partnering with us to provide services that are available not only to our patients, but to the community as a whole. For example, laboratory. Right now, the only lab services are at our health center currently, and they are only for our patients. So we really need a lab service in this community for all people, instead of going out of town for that service. Physical therapy, there's a whole long list of partners that we've been working with, and we'll continue to recruit more as we ferret out all the details and actually conduct community forums for the community's input and what they would like to see on that first floor. As far as the community room goes, that's really basically going to be a teaching kitchen to address nutrition services, education, presentations, health, education presentations, that type of thing. And it's not a community room for parties and activities like that. It's definitely related to health and wellness. The other thing that's really important that I wanted to point out is that although the size sounds really big, right now, we are located in three separate locations, Tarmen, First Street, and Third Street, with two temporary modulators. And that combined space is about 11,000 square feet right now. And it's very inefficient, obviously, to operate out of three different, well, five, technically, five different locations, but we've made it work. This new facility will bring us all under one roof with additional services that we can offer and promote for the whole community. So we're really excited about that. There's about 10,000 square feet that we're going to use for urgent care, well, not 10,000, on the first floor is 10,000 feet, square feet. We're going to have urgent care and a primary residency program for nurse practitioners or physicians, whichever one that we contract with another educational institution. Those are really focused on promoting recruitment efforts and training more personnel for the healthcare industry, which is hugely needed in this area, all over the nation, but we're only focused on our area right now. The other thing is the amount of activity that will go on at the health center. You know, we've done lots of calculations. Once Matt goes through his presentation and the floor's opened up for questions, comments, concerns, I can address those as much as my notes have. I'm not going to read you all these pages, but if the questions come up, I think I'm prepared to answer them. I hope I am. We're really excited. I want to finally end with saying thank you to David and Kevin, who have been so patient and full of answers and ideas and how to make this thing work, and have just provided an immense amount of help to me and to our architect, Matt. He will go through the building and map out how we came up with this design and how it is designed for health, to promote health and to take care of the environment as well. So we're really excited, and I just want to again say thank you, and we'll wait for any questions. Thanks, Kevin. Thanks, David.
Matt, please go ahead.
Thank you, Debbie. Thank you, City Council. My name is Matt Stromberg with Stromberg Architecture. I am located here, our office is located here in Berkeley, California. We're very excited to be here tonight. And just to quickly echo Debbie's comments, we're also very grateful to all the work that David and Kevin and all of the City Council and members of various workshops have contributed to over the years. We've been working on this project since early 2016. So we're delighted to be here tonight in this moment to present this project, the Alexander Valley Wellness Center, to City Council. As Kevin mentioned, we met a few weeks ago with the Planning Commission. This is a very similar presentation. I'm going to go through it quickly and efficiently, hopefully, and make myself available to answer any questions at the end. As has been mentioned, the project is a three-story federally qualified community wellness center that will offer primary care, pediatric care, specialty care, behavioral health, dental services, wellness and educational programming, and administrative space. It will include landscaping site work onsite and offsite utility work, including a new above-grade transformer and a future backup generator, trash enclosure, and the construction of a new on-grade parking lot. Kevin indicated that the project is in the TOD district, and we generated this diagram early on just to demonstrate what would be allowable on our site. These are three bird's eye perspective views. So here's Cloverdale Boulevard, here's Citrus Fair Boulevard, so downtown is further off to my right here. In the TOD, we are allowed to build out to the outer extremities of the lot line. In other words, there's zero lot line setbacks. And the FAR is three, which means that you can essentially cover the entire site with building up to three stories. And in fact, in the TOD, the minimum building height for new constructions is two, new construction is two stories. So the emphasis with TOD is clearly to build up the neighborhood, to make the neighborhood more walkable, user-friendly, and to really activate the area close to downtown. Again, so here's what would be allowable on Lot B, the future site of Alexander Valley Wellness Center. And this is the volume of what we are proposing at that location. It's three stories, and I'll go into a little bit of the massing here in a minute. This is just a really quick diagram that shows how the city of Cloverdale has developed over time. This is the downtown core, and we like to do these types of diagrams, which really show the built and unbuilt context. So the white means to represent buildings, and the black area represents the unbuilt area. And you can see historically the. It makes for a very pedestrian-friendly corridor. And the Alexander Valley Healthcare sees itself as a node at the southern terminus of this more active, walking-friendly downtown area, as opposed to sort of the later developed areas where sites were developed further away from the street with intention at the time, which was more automobile-friendly. The other thing we were interested in looking at is how the outdoor spaces of the downtown, existing downtown core could be continued as a part of this project. So I'll go into this in a little bit greater detail in a minute, but we intentionally have these outdoor areas that are meant to be open to the public as part of our project. I'm not going to read this all the way through tonight. I hope that as part of the public record, if anyone wants to read it, they're more than welcome to. Suffice to say that the Alexander Valley Wellness Center does seek to provide a vibrant, inviting and healthy place for patient staff and the community with a functional, high-performing, modern and sustainably-built federally qualified healthcare building. The state-of-the-art medical services and community educational and supportive services benefit from a comfortable and secure facility with a strong connection to the local surroundings. And so you'll see from the upcoming slides where we attempt to have the building really speak to this idea of wellness and to the connection back to the community which the, the building will serve. So the, the building will really emphasize daylighting. We have a ribbon of windows around the second floor, which will allow occupants of the building to always see where they are relative to the site outside. It will bring in natural daylight. It helps with wayfinding. The building is a little less, or I should say, a little more sinuous on the, on the bottom floor where it meets the grade, which is inviting. And again, more to the scale of the pedestrian. And there will be views from inside of the building as well, which I'll show here shortly. Here are just a series of quick slides that show how we arrived at the form of the building as it exists today. Each one, each one of these tiles here represent a, a component of the program that Alexander Valley Healthcare requires in order to function. And we, we started with those tiles. We started with this idea of having an outdoor space that connected to the existing parks in the downtown core. We opened up the space to peel away a little bit of frontage here at the corner, which, by the way, this is roughly equal to the amount of outdoor space that exists at the site currently with the, with the benches and plantings there at the moment. And then we sort of shuffled the deck of these cards and looked at this intersection at the node and looked at the verticality of what that node could bring in terms of, of distribution and circulation within the building. And then to break up the massing of the building, we pushed and pulled some of the massing and set back the entire third floor of the building and lowered the roof of the third floor of the building. And this is what a bird's eye perspective rendering view of the building will look like. The, 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 the building, again, the, the parklet here on the front of the building will really serve members of the community as they're walking down the street. There is, well, I'll show it on the site plan, but there's, there's parklets all the way around the building. And there's a large parking lot, as Kevin indicated, for a hundred and sixty-eight cars on the back of the building. The color of the fiber reinforced concrete panels is largely inspired by the northern Sonoma County foliage that we see at the end of every year, where the greens are coming in and the leaves of the vines are on the way out. This is a site plan of, of our site. It's generated by our landscape architect. Again, you can see that park at the northeast corner of our site. There's parks all the way around the building for contemplative areas for patients to, to, to rest before or after a visit inside the building. There is an automobile drop-off along the street, as well as an entire parking lot and quick drop-off on the rear of the building. This is a diagram that shows how site access will function. The, 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 the fire department and members of the public will all enter the site either from Cloverdale Boulevard, Healdsburg Avenue, or Washington Street. And per the SEQA study and the traffic report that was included in the SEQA study, it was determined that a full extension of Washington Street was not necessary in order for the, for the sufficient functioning of our project. And similarly, Citrus Fair Drive, which is a private drive, is not necessary for the, for the functioning of our project in any way. So all of the deliveries, the generator and the, the refuse will be supplied. Patients will arrive all from the public right of way. This is a quick slide that we showed two weeks ago at the Planning Commission meeting just for interest, showing what the materiality of the building will look like. I can answer any questions if there's any questions on that after. This is a slide that is showing what we're anticipating the views will be from the upper floors of the building, looking out towards the Myakamas Mountains to the east and the coastal range to the, to the west. Again, that, that connection to the outside, even when you're inside of a building, we know going to the doctors can sometimes cause anxiety. And so this is very intentional to really maximize this beautiful view in each direction that, that occupants will have in the building. And to that, and also there is a lot of daylight that is intentionally designed to stream into the inner core of the building, which contributes also to user comfort, to wayfinding and to overall health of occupants. This is a site plan, first floor plan. I'm going to skip quickly to the next slide, which is a little easier to read, which shows some of the programming on the first floor. Debbie talked about this more at length, so I won't really go into it, but, but the majority of the space on the first floor is dedicated to tenant spaces and urgent care and specialty care and behavioral health. And then the, the, the core of the services will really be on the second floor, where there will be family health services. And the way this project is designed is that there will be three pods, each consisting of ten exam rooms, all very similar in, in size and scale. And then the, the, the healthcare providers will work from the center of the pod and move into the exam room as members of the public will move into each exam room. And so it creates a very healthy, productive, collaborative working environment for the healthcare providers. It also will allow for great connection to the outside for members of the public as they're waiting to go into their, their rooms. The third floor will be a dental clinic and administrative spaces. This is an elevation of the building looking from Cloverdale Boulevard, and this is looking at the building from the parking lot side. And these are just quick sections that we added to show how the building steps back at the third floor from the street. And it shows a little bit of the articulation as well of the building. And with that, my presentation is complete. I'm happy to answer any questions that may arise.
Thank you, sir. I'll start by asking, speaking with the council members for discussion. Councilmember Bagby, would you like to go first?
No questions, Jeff.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Paula?
I have no questions.
Vice Mayor?
I just have a quick one for staff, Kevin. On the rental spaces on the first floor, are they going to be restricted as far as what type of rentals they can be based on the zoning of the building?
That's correct. And there, there-
Repeat the question, the mic was off.
Oh. Do you want to repeat it?
There you go. My question was, the rental units that are on the first floor, are they going to be governed by the overall zoning for that parcel?
Correct. They'll be subject to the TOD. In some cases, there could be a use permit required, or they could be allowed uses.
Okay. Thank you.
I just had a real quick question, Debbie, because I don't, I don't know the answer to this. If, just say somebody has Kaiser or Sutter, are they able to go in there and use the labs and do things like that in there? Is it something that, you know, a lot, a lot of our public will share? Or is it just a certain demographic? Or how does this work so that everyone can know how the whole community gets to use this property?
So you're asking if people that have coverage from Kaiser or-
Other insurances or anything?
Sutter or-
Yes, any, any insurance. How would that work for them?
Pretty much every insurance would cover the lab except Kaiser. If we can negotiate an agreement with Kaiser to draw labs up here, that's one option. But we have not negotiated such agreement yet. Good idea, if you know anyone at Kaiser. I know a few people, so I will, I will continue to pursue that. But, but yes, it will definitely be open to the public with private insurance, commercial insurance.
Perfect. Thank you so much for that comment. Hearing nothing else, I'll open it up to the public. Would our audience in front of us like to go first? Please step up, ma'am. If you don't mind, please state your name for the record.
And I meant to print this out, so pardon me reading from my phone. My name's Kirsten Telez, K-I-R-S-T-E-N-T-E-L-L-E-Z. I'm a Cloverdale resident, and I serve on the board of Alexander Valley Healthcare. So I want to thank you for this evening and for your service to our community. AVH Leadership, as Debbie has mentioned and has already been mentioned this evening, has been working for many years on this purchase and making this come to fruition. It's not been an easy path, but it's a necessary one. And I'm so pleased that after all this hard work, we're here tonight having this conversation. I serve on the board of Alexander Valley Healthcare because I firmly believe that access to excellent healthcare, regardless of your ability to pay, is a basic human right, and this is the mission of Alexander Valley Healthcare. Currently, as you're aware and as Debbie indicated, our services are scattered through multiple buildings throughout town, and we struggle to serve our existing population. As our little town grows, and I know this evening and other evenings you've been talking about various new developments, we will see more and more need for our services. We're in desperate need of a new healthcare facility where we can provide our full range of medical, dental, counseling services and new services, as have already been mentioned this evening, and as well as community resources and teaching space under one roof. And there'll be other services and partnerships also that have been mentioned as part of our conversations with the community as part of this project. Putting a health and wellness center at the entrance to town sends a message to everyone who comes here, including the physicians and other healthcare providers that we desperately need to recruit, that Cloverdale cares about the health and wellness of our whole community. Alexander Valley Healthcare has been here for Cloverdale, especially in the last two challenging years, vaccinating our residents even when they didn't know where or if the funding would come, reaching out to La Familia Sanaa and other organizations to get our most vulnerable populations cared for, and providing excellent healthcare to everyone in need. I believe that Alexander Valley Healthcare is essential to Cloverdale, and I hope you'll support this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Kirsten. Jill, I see one hand up. If you, if you don't mind, it's James Novak. If you could promote them, and then I believe we'll go back to the audience.
Matt, if you could reduce the volume of the screen.
Reduce my screen.
Or take, take the PowerPoint away. Yeah, thank you.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you, James. Go ahead.
I'm a, I'm a family physician that moved down from Oregon about four years ago, and I just love Cloverdale, I love the community, and I was excited to hear the new medical facility when I came to town, and therefore I had the opportunity to join the board. Last week, the Journal of the American Medical Association published an article that one in five physicians would, or medical physicians would retire in two years. And Alexander Valley Wellness Center has to be competitive in attracting new medical providers and having an attractive and work-friendly environment is extremely important in being able to attract new physicians to the facility. This is our chance, and so we need to do it now. Thank you. I appreciate you.
Thank you, sir.
Bring it back to the audience, please, sir.
Thank you, Cloverdale resident, Garrett Broton. Yeah, so this is kind of a really big deal, and it hasn't been mentioned to the viewing public in any of the presentation, but this is not a development proposing to come in on their, on property purchased by themselves, zoned for themselves. This is actually the sale of town-owned property to a private development with federal funding. This is, I can't think of better property that the town has actually owned. And being a resident here since 2014, I've always kind of, everybody's been waiting to find out what's going to happen in Times Square, what kind of cool and exciting exotic projects are going to happen. And this feels kind of underwhelming, to be honest. I'm kind of having seller's remorse already. I don't have anything against a healthcare center. I think it's a great idea. I just don't know if this is the right place for it. I was, this may have been in the works for quite some time. I can say that the public hasn't been too knowledgeable of it. The first time I've seen the plans was at the, the planning meeting two weeks ago, and it was a pretty pathetically turned-out planning meeting. I think only, there were only two or three commissioners there, and one of them had to recuse herself. So just so the public knows that. And the deed for sale is in fifteen years. This can be turned into anything. So, you know, I hope we like healthcare for fifteen years, and then it ends. Excuse me. So I have another concern too, and it's that I don't know that it's going to meet our goals as a, as the TOD and the town and downtown. When I go to the health, ask yourselves, when you go to your health center or your medical provider, do you stay there any longer than you have to? It's like an errand for the day. I take off of work or whatever. I'm there, take care of my business. I don't like to stay in hospitals or health centers any longer than I need to be, and I wouldn't. I'm going home after that. I don't know that it's going to be what we want it to be. My, my, my last concern, I don't know, I don't see a timer. My last concern is just on another level, is that it's no secret that the town or the city would love Washington Street to go through. Right now, we're actually sitting on the property to be able to make that happen. If people don't know, Washington Street is not owned, at least the, the part from the, what is it? The part north of the fair is not. It would, we could, now we have the opportunity to make some kind of agreement with the property owner and do some kind of land swap or something. That property, that opportunity won't be there later. And if the goal of the city of Cloverdale is to come in and put a health center in there, and then later on by, later on just take Washington by some kind of, I won't use the words, that's kind of sinister and not very fair to the community, people that have been there for a long time servicing our community. So I just want all those points to be known by the public and everything. We have, I don't have anything against a health center. I think it's a great idea. We have, I don't have anything against a health center. I think it's a great idea. City Park is way off in the corner, and it's not central for Cloverdale, not near downtown. There's plans to redo City Park. Maybe that would be a great place for a health center, and we can have a park at Times Square. I mean, these are all considerations. I don't think we're made. All of a sudden, we have a 41-page agreement and some plans. I know there are very, very, a lot of work goes into this by staff and developer and all of that. But, you know, that's why we're having a town council meeting, and it's just not too late to reconsider before that, before agreements are signed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Please come forward.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Lands, city council, staff, and guests. My name is Allison Kaney, and I'm the CEO of the Cloverdale Citrus Fair, representing the Citrus Fair Association. You do have my letter from, on behalf of the board in your packet, but there were a couple of items we wanted to punctuate this evening. The project as presented does contain design elements that do not have a positive impact on the Citrus Fair, a little bit less than perhaps the city thought they might. These elements include, but are not limited to, the driveway that leads from Citrus Fair Drive into the parking lot of the Wellness Center. We will not encourage entry to the lot by our patrons via Citrus Fair Drive. We're not going to encourage anything that's going to impede pedestrian traffic, which we are going to allow to increase after this project, especially at night. One or two walkways in this area really are preferred. The proposed sidewalk on fair property, which will take away street width, has the potential to be a tripping hazard for additional and new uses that we're going to make for Citrus Fair Drive. It seems counterintuitive and not logical to not want a sidewalk. But as we look at this area, and we've experienced other events that have happened on city streets, we really see this as a detriment and a safety hazard. The fair would love to see a sidewalk installed outside of the property line and protected and screened from Citrus Fair Drive. Furthermore, the fair would like to see that exchanges for easements and/or real property that have been proposed and are assumed in this design be of similar nature. Real property for real property, depreciable assets for depreciable assets. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Allison. I see no more hands on the screen. Anyone else in our audience? Seeing none, I'll close public comments and bring it back to the dais. Councilmember Bagby, would you like to go first?
Are we pulling it back for deliberations at this point?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Yeah, I'm sure, I'm happy to, I'm happy to lead off. You know, after having, you know, read the staff report, it's really clear that, you know, this project in this location does meet our general plan goals. But let's remember that it's requiring a conditional use permit. It's really not the highest and best use of this particular location. I share the concerns of members of the public as well as the Citrus Fair. I don't oppose Alexander Valley Healthcare. In fact, I'm grateful to have them in town. And I think that up until COVID, we took them for granted, which unfortunately, and we have really come to a new appreciation for having our own local health center. So it's not a question of supporting the board or supporting the project. It's a question of really supporting the location up front on that corner that will impact the Citrus Fair. And we have to remember that, again, this is our taxpayer dollars. This is, this is city property. It's specifically, it's housing fund property. And, you know, we have a fiduciary duty as a council to see that it gets used in its highest, best return for the taxpayers. So unfortunately, just, I would, I'm also very concerned in the fashion, with the fashion offered to Alexander Valley Healthcare. It was kind of done on a very ad hoc basis at a council meeting, just sort of, you know, given away to the organization without adequate public input, which we've heard from the public today. Is this, I don't really believe it has been vetted properly. I don't believe that it has been subject to enough public input as far as the plan is concerned. And again, it's, you know, it's a beautiful design. It's a beautiful layout. My concern is that it's an optimal piece of property that is owned by the taxpayers of Cloverdale, and is it the highest and best use in that location? It's just, it's that location. And I think that there are advantages and disadvantages to having, you know, the, a healthcare facility, you know, on that main corner. I don't know of any other communities that have one in a location like that. So, I mean, I appreciate the design and I appreciate how much thought has gone into it. I'm just still not convinced that it's the best location. We're hearing from members of the public that there hasn't been adequate input. There are concerns by, you know, our partners across the street at Citrus Fair. So, you know, unfortunately, I just, I just don't feel like I can support it tonight. It really is something I want to be able to support. I think that it's important to me that, that the community really be behind it and there be a true consensus. But I'm not sure we achieved that here, we achieved that here tonight. So unfortunately, that's, that's the way I'm leaning.
Thank you, Councilmember Bagby. Councilmember Paula?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is not a fly-by-night deal. This has been in the works for over seven years. There's been many, many, many meetings with a lot of public input over those years. This is not something that just came up today, and here we are going to vote on it. And I got to make it clear to the public, it's not a gift to public funds. These were purchased with housing funds, and the money they pay for the property will go back into the housing fund. So there's no gift here. So I want to make that real clear. I think it's a good use of the property. It's a need. We have a big need in this community for medical services, and one of those is now, not two years down the road, not 10 years down the road. It's easy to say find another site, but I don't see any alternative. Nobody's presented one that works for this kind of a building that's going to meet our needs. I think this is the right place. I think it's the right project. It's certainly, they're ready to go, and it's going to start serving this community. I fully support it, and I'm looking forward to the day the shovel goes in the ground to get this thing on the road. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you hear me okay? Okay. Well, I just want to echo what Councilmember Paula said. You know, I can remember having our initial meetings at the fire station going back six, seven years ago when we first started with this. And I can't believe that people in the community didn't know that we were designing the medical center on that facility, on that parcel. I'm ready to support it this evening. I think it's long overdue. And yeah, it's the right spot. And Councilmember Bagby, you know, we've been waiting for this a long time. You know, this is the, maybe about a year ago, I heard some concerns about the location. But up until then, everybody's been silent on it. So I'm ready to support it this evening. Thank you.
I would like to ask a couple of questions. Kevin or David, you'd probably be the best to answer this. Listening to Citrus Fair, who, you know, when you design a project, you want to listen to their neighbors and see how it fits with the rest of their community or with their designs. Start with the first thing they talked about was the driveway. There's a, I guess it'd be the, probably the entrance or exit from the north side of the property that they're concerned with the exits onto Citrus Fair Boulevard. Can you explain that and the need or reason for that exact driveway?
Mayor, members of council, I'm happy to address the question. And just for the members of the audience, what we're speaking about is a proposed driveway located along the northern boundary of the project that is designed as a driveway or an access point from the project site on Times Square to Citrus Fair Drive. On the site plan, what that is identified as currently is an emergency vehicle access. The discussion early on was that the Cloverdale Fire District required or needed really 360-degree access to the building, given its occupancy type under the building code, its size, and its location. There has been a subsequent determination that they can obtain the necessary access to the site by way of connecting to an existing hydrant and the hose length that would be necessary. So there's kind of some alternatives within the code that provides a mechanism to meet the fire code absent that driveway. But with that said, again, looking at the kind of the layout of the site, if you remove that, all access to and from the site would be for emergency vehicles. And let's, let's be mindful that Cloverdale Fire District isn't the only emergency service provider in our community. We also have Cloverdale Ambulance, and likewise, we also have the Cloverdale Police Department. So, you know, that was, that was designed with that in mind, of course. And I think Matt can touch on the EVA requirements, the architect. There was also some consideration during the design process. You know, again, looking through the lens of circulation for the project site and the project area, and looking down the road, you know, it was an opportunity to provide, you know, a good circulation plan to and from the parking lot, as well as from the surrounding streets. So it was intended to provide that opportunity, noting, and we clearly understand that the Citrus Fair has indicated that, you know, strongly that they don't, they prefer, they don't prefer access to Citrus Fair Drive. And as such, it was going to be subject to closure with a pole and, but be maintained as an emergency vehicle access for emergency services providers and only be opened in the, in the need in case there is an emergency. I do note in the letter from the Citrus Fair Board that, and I want to take particularly note that the Citrus Fair has been a tremendous partner with the city, particularly in terms of our emergency preparedness and emergency response efforts and, and working with collaboratively with the city.
Sorry, I couldn't quite hear you. Could you please?
Siri wanted to say something, but in that regard, we have seen, you know, tremendous amount of patrons there. And, you know, one of the things that we looked at in terms of that driveway was whether there would ever be an opportunity for a shared parking concept with the Citrus Fair where, again, whether that'd be something, you know, that we understand would be worked out between the project proponents, the Wellness Center and the Citrus Fair, and kind of preserving that access point. But we do note that the letter does raise concerns about that. The elimination of that, if council is inclined, as part of your design review tonight, I think could be supported. But again, be mindful that, you know, it does present an emergency vehicle access point, maybe not technically required under the code for the Fire District, but nonetheless, having access to a large facility like that from all points of access can be critical, particularly in an emergency, during an emergency event. And likewise, also just noting that, you know, there could be future opportunities to improve and support egress and ingress, you know, through and from the project site and to the surrounding circulation systems.
Thank you. And before I comment on any of the, I'm going to go through all the questions first, and then I'll talk about my opinions or whatever on this. They also talked about the sidewalks taking away from the street width. Can you explain where the sidewalks will be placed and how that would work for me?
Absolutely. And I'll ask, if it's okay with you, Mayor and council, to maybe have Matt Stromberg, the architect, weigh in. We're pretty clear that the proposed sidewalk along the northern edge of the Alexander, the parcel B of the Times Square property is located on the Times Square property. I think maybe, maybe the exception would be a portion, you know, usually sidewalk, in conjunction with sidewalk, there's also what's referred to as curb and gutter. Often that gutter pan, depending on how it's designed, can, could potentially encroach along to existing pavement, because you do, you know, for proper drainage purposes, you want those to connect. So I think there may be some connection with the gutter system to the Times Square property. I mean, excuse me, the Citrus Fair property and/or their private property. But the sidewalk itself is situated and located on the Times Square property. One item to note, again, acknowledging the Citrus Fair's comment that Citrus Fair Drive is a private right-of-way or private street or private property. If that was subject to closure, that would mean also that there's, that the sidewalk that is used often by the public, including children walking to and from school, would no longer be available. And that would, that would certainly, I think, highlight the need to have a public walkway along the Times Square property to serve pedestrians.
Thank you. So also in their letter, and I don't, I don't think she presented it tonight, but with the letter that is in our packet here, they discussed a fence along the property line versus a curb to keep the properties separate. Taking all of this into consideration, bringing, that's why I didn't comment until now. I understand how the Citrus Fair wouldn't want to have an egress for cars always pulling out onto their private property. I totally understand that and support that. To find a way to mitigate or, or not have that problem for the Citrus Fair, because it's their private property technically, you know. So I think we could do all three of these things at once, in my opinion, is what I'm seeing, or finding ways to make everyone happy. If we put a curb and gutter on Times Square property, put a fence up, and the gate in that fence is only opened and in contract for emergency vehicles only, nobody goes in and out, it doesn't have, people can walk on the sidewalk to and from the school on Times Square side, and there is no access onto the Citrus Fair side of the gate. So if they chose to park cars there, for instance, it would be allowed, whether it be, you know, parallel parking, angled parking, whatever they chose to do on that private side. Their property is their property. Our curb and, or, I'm sorry, Debbie's curb and gutter is Debbie's curb and gutter, and you still have your emergency access that is controlled by a gate that is controlled by the emergency vehicles. I don't know. I'm looking for options to negotiate to make them happy, because I want these people to be good neighbors with each other. Personally, I see it as 180 parking spots that could be used for the fair, since the Washington School won't be available to them anymore. But, you know, that's just me looking at it from the outside, and I'm just one person. So I thought maybe, you know, that could be a good, a good neighbor thing that you guys shared, and you opened that gate during your times that you would need it and made deals. But that's something you guys can work out. I'm trying to mix it all together. And if there's anything that I'm saying wrong or you want to tell me off, please step up here and do so. I'm just, I'm trying to find a way to negotiate for the two of you so that we can move forward in a positive fashion versus somebody walking out here upset with us.
And Mayor, if I can, just two points. One relative to the gate, the current design does reflect a pole, a pole gate, which, you know, would prevent vehicles from, you know, normal vehicles from, you know, utilizing that driveway. So that component, at least in terms of the driveways addressed, right now, there is not a proposed fence along the entire northern section of the property. It is normal city practice when a developer does, you know, construct a sidewalk, which is part of our Muni Code requirements to provide those frontage improvements. Those, those are dedicated to, that is public right-of-way to the city. So that would, that sidewalk section would, would become private property, which would be, you know, part of our, an area which we would maintain, maintain and be responsible for the liability, you know, that may be generated from the public's use of that, that public right-of-way. So I just wanted to note that, because there was some concern about potential tripping hazards and liability to the Citrus Fair. But I think that's addressed if, again, the sidewalk's located If, again, the sidewalk's located on the Times Square and is dedicated to the city, the city would assume that as part of our liability program.
Thank you. What I'm just, I'm trying to picture it through the lens of the Citrus Fair, and I would, if I was them looking at the reasoning, and I could be wrong, this is just me, because I haven't heard it from them, is they're probably picturing a lot of the Times Square patients parking and taking up their area, because it'll be a shorter walk to whatever door they're in, you know, just guessing. So that's why I'm proposing or thinking in my head that the fence would solve that, because then they wouldn't be able to go straight shot, and it would be better to use their own parking lot at that point. Vice Mayor, please.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, going back to the initial designs, and Matt, I know you were part of those, but the exit onto Citrus Fair Drive was established when we thought we were going to have a working, a better working relationship with the Citrus Fair in the design of this project. But then it was decided to just put it in while they were pouring the sidewalks in cement, in case that relationship ever changes. In the meantime, it's emergency-only with a K, I think they call it a K-gate on it, so that nobody could go in and out. I'm not so sure how a fence would look there. If the Citrus Fair wanted to post signs, "Citrus Fair Parking Only" on that north side of the Times Square property, they're more than welcome to do that. But I think a fence would really take away from the appearance of the new facility. That's just my thought.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Paul or Councilmember Bagby, anything else?
Oh, I'll thank Mr. Mayor. And I know Matt's had his hand up for a while. I think that, you know, the discussion that has ensued is kind of indicative of the fact that there isn't a really good, solid master plan, that's a partnership between the city, Citrus Fair, and Alexander Valley Healthcare. I think it's kind of showing the weaknesses, when we could actually be coming forward tonight with consensus from all of the parties, and that's really what I would prefer to see.
I'm going to go with Matt real quick first, and then I'm going to have you step up, Allison. Thank you so much. Matt, please go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to basically echo, I think, some of the comments I'm hearing, that the driveway was put there mostly as a gesture of goodwill. It was understood at the time that Citrus Fair has a private drive there, and that if we were ever to connect to that site, that it would be in the interest of a collaborative neighborly agreement, where the Citrus Fair could use the parking lot for their events, because as we understand it, the hours of Alexander Valley Healthcare will be during the day and not on the weekends. So there seemed to be a really nice symbiotic opportunity there. We met with the Citrus Fair back in March 9, 2018, and presented some ideas to collaborate on shared access, and those ideas were not received. And so, to Councilmember Walter's point, what we decided to do was put the infrastructure there with the hope that if we build it, they will come, and it's possible that that might not happen, and if that's the case, we could just leave the pole gate up, and we don't need to ever connect to the Citrus Fair private drive. And just to quickly follow up on the conversation around EVA access, there's no real special code that we're invoking. The Fire Department code is very clear that we just need 150-foot hose length to access the building. So it does not matter if a fire truck uses that driveway or not. Obviously, it makes a whole lot of sense if they would be able to, but that's not the arena that we're operating in at the moment.
Could I make one comment? I just want to reiterate what Matt said, because I served on the ad hoc committee with city staff. We did meet with the Fair Board, we met with the former CEO several meetings, and walked through all these options, and at that time, there was no interest in participating. So that's where we went down a different, so it's important to understand, we did try to build that relationship, but there was no interest at that time. And I think what they're trying to say is the interest is still there, if in the future that does change where you want to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Allison, I know we've been commenting lots about what you said in the letter, so I'd like, I want to give you more opportunity to speak, please.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Well, first of all, I want to make some clarifications, because there is an assumption here tonight that us not wanting a driveway means that we don't want a partnership with the parking lot in the Alexander Valley Wellness Center across the street, and that is not the case. What our concern is, is about safety. I would never have a large event where 10,000 people are on my property and allow traffic to go up and down the causeway in front of it. That is not safe. So to utilize the parking across Citrus Fair Drive, the best flow of traffic is going to be to allow people to go down and access the parking lot, just as they would during the use of the healthcare center, and then put in pedestrian pathways in between the two spaces, so they can come across the street. When the fair lets out, when that carnival closes, you have pedestrians, children pouring into the street, and I really don't want to see the fair exiting. I don't want a quinceañera letting out and then have traffic exiting onto Citrus Fair Drive at the same time. That's just bad flow. Look at any amusement park you've ever been to, it's not good. It's not good for emergency services, it's not good when we're in evacuation center, or any of these other events. So the second thing I wanted to clarify is that the building of the Wellness Center is not the only dynamic that the Citrus Fair is dealing with. We're like many other fairgrounds where the world is changing around us, squeezing and pinching us a little bit, and we have to think about different ways we are going to serve the community in the way we've always done. So as our world is changing, we are starting to rethink the way we're going to do that. We've lost parking space over at Washington Middle School, which is wonderful, that gym is fantastic, but it changes our parking dynamic. We've been asked for, you know, we're talking and trying to figure out the best way to provide an easement for Washington Street to go all the way through. Great. Progress is fantastic, but we have to rethink what we're doing. So as we look at this wonderful private drive, which is almost an entire acre by itself, the concept of the celebratory street fair without closing a real street is pretty appealing. And then we take our outdoor event off of our parking area, and we put it on the street, and then we allow parking to happen there, so we can keep it contained, we can keep it controlled, and the fence keeps our guests inside and out of the beautiful contemplative spots where people might want to go drink their beer and toss their garbage in the corner. So there's actually a lot of give and take here, and there's a lot of thought, not just about what we need, but how we know that our guests are going to utilize the area, and the world's changing for all of us, and we just all have to be able to shift, and all three of us, the school, the Wellness Center, and the Citrus Fair, serve the community the best we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Allison. I see an attendee with a hand up, since I've opened to the public again, if we could, it looks like Angela.
Can you hear me all right?
You can hear me.
So I am not sure who the person was. He spoke earlier, and he brought up a lot of good points about possibly moving the project over by where City Park is. Councilmember Bagby brought up a lot of good points. I think, although this has been ongoing for several years, there's a lot of people that just only recently heard about it in the last couple of years. I agree with both of them. There's also the parcel on the south end of town that is owned by the school. Perhaps they might want to sell it and move the project there. I think that we're opening ourselves up to a lot of serious traffic and congestion, especially when school and the fair and the clinic are all running at the same time. I think that's going to cause a lot of serious congestion. I don't think that the traffic is being taken into consideration. So that's pretty much all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Angela. Matt, is your hand up still, or again?
Yes, sir. Your hand is still up. I was sure if you had another comment.
No, I'm sorry, I did not mean to raise my hand again, but there has been a traffic study that has been done. That's been part of the public record for a couple of years.
Thank you.
Debbie, are you still here? I can't see through the screen. Okay, well, I can't see you through the screen, you're kind of, there you go.
I just didn't want to have to walk back and forth, because I'm afraid of tripping.
Debbie, there's been some conversation about simultaneously having the Citrus Fair and the clinic open at the same time. Could you just walk us through that scenario? Because in past meetings, you had mentioned that your clinic would be closed during the Citrus Fair. Could you just kind of reiterate that with us?
So typically, the Citrus Fair falls, starts on Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, correct?
Saturday, Sunday, Monday.
And Monday, and Monday's President's Day, I believe. So President's Day is a holiday for our health center. Thursday and Friday, we would remain open. The actual historic volume on those two days goes way down because of the Citrus Fair, but we also have a lot of Citrus Fair clients that come to the health center during that time. We won't be open on the weekend. That isn't going to happen. When we have urgent care, we will have urgent care hours, but urgent care is very limited business. It's not a daily volume like we have every day at regular, normal primary care. Urgent care visits, at the most, could be five to 10 patients. It's just not, there isn't a large volume. That's why we haven't had one up here before now. We can just incorporate it into our regular business and make it work. So that's kind of where we're at with that. As far as the public just hearing about this, you know, we've had years of collaboration with the city on this project, and we've gone back and forth many times at city council meetings, especially with the design when the police station was going to go there, next to us, or us on the other side. So I'm sorry people didn't hear about it sooner, but it has been out in the public, and everything's been available to the public.
And Debbie, could you just share with us your thoughts? I'm kind of curious on finding another location, like over on Second Street Park.
We looked for another location four years, and the Second Street Park and any other location owned by the city has also been, well, not the Second Street Park has not been vetted, but other locations owned by the city have been vetted, and they were not viable. So we've definitely looked at other locations.
Thank you. Debbie, I have a quick question, if you don't mind. Just listening to what's been said tonight, and I know we've had years of negotiations, because I've been involved prior with my other board and now here, is there anything that you hear that is something you would want to work with, or negotiate, or meet with the Fair Board, or talk about, that we could find ways to, you know, work together?
Yes, I started meeting with the Fair Board at least a minimum of five years ago, and talking with them and trying to work and collaborate with them. I did not feel the opposition back then. We will continue to try to partner with anyone, the school, the Fair Board, anyone. I will say, one of my biggest concerns right now is we're putting the sidewalk in for public, and, you know, it goes, it's donated as a public right-of-way, for the safety of the children walking to and from school. I've lived here for 40 years. I've raised four children here, and I have two children going to school here now, grandchildren going to school here now. And it is a disaster over there, and we need that fixed, and we are definitely on board for being partners and getting that Washington Street through, making decent sidewalks and access for the children, and an easy traffic flow for the parents. I was one of them, still am if I have to go pick up the grandkids, and it's a nightmare. So yeah, we're definitely wanting to work with people. I'm not at all excited about a cyclone fence. I'm not at all excited about that, but that's it. I mean, I'm definitely negotiable to work with everyone.
Thank you, Debbie. Melanie?
So...
Yeah, I was going to say, what do you need from us, and where do you want to...
So I'd like to start the process. I'd like to introduce a resolution of City of Cloverdale City Council adopting a mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program, MMRP, for a conditional use permit, design review and development agreement, and to construct an all-inclusive community wellness center, the Alexander Valley Wellness Center, on the 2.8-acre project site located at South Cloverdale Boulevard and Citrus Fair Drive, APN 001-440-049.
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor. I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Paula?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby?
Yeah.
Mayor Lands?
Aye.
And I'll note for the record that Councilmember Cruz has recused.
So Mr. Mayor, I'd like to introduce a second resolution. A resolution of City of Cloverdale City Council approving a major design review and conditional use permit, and adopting an ordinance approving a development agreement to construct an all-inclusive community wellness center, the Alexander Valley Wellness Center, on the 2.8-acre project site located at South Cloverdale Boulevard and Citrus Fair Drive,
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
Roll call.
Councilmember Paula?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby?
Yeah.
Mayor Lands?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, for the next resolution, please introduce the first reading, by title only, of an ordinance, A, Attachment 3, entitled, in ordinance of the City of Cloverdale, approving a development agreement with the Copper Tower Family Medical Center, preparing to the development, pertaining to the development of the Alexander Valley Wellness Center project located on 2.8 acres project site at South Cloverdale Boulevard and Citrus Fair Drive, APN 001-440-049.
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Aye.
Councilmember Paula?
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby?
Yeah.
Mayor Lands?
I would ask Debbie, that you guys strongly consider that driveway, or work something out with the Citrus Fair?
I didn't hear you.
I said I would just strongly ask you to look at that driveway that is not needed, or find some way to negotiate with them to become good partners between Allison and their board and you. I appreciate it. I know you will, I know you guys will, and we're all going to work it out in this town, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. I just wanted to thank all the speakers.
And I hope I wasn't out of line for that, Jose, just making sure afterwards.
And, Mr. Mayor, can we just take a short break, and then have time to get Councilmember Cruz back in as well?
Nine, we'll come back.
And if I could just say something before everyone goes, it appears that Russia did invade this evening, so they have boots on the ground. Can't we all just get along?
Okay, five-minute break, 8:10, we'll come back, 8:10. Okay. Five-minute break. 8:10. We'll come back. 8:10.
Can you hear us?
I can hear you just fine.
Thank you so much. Jake Lingo, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Jake, thank you for joining us tonight. Do you want to give us a little rundown of your project?
The modifications that we're talking about for the final map?
Sure, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. I appreciate the time. As Kevin indicated, this is really the final step in the process of recording the final map. As I think everyone is aware here at the council level, is we've spent a lot of time, I believe, this development started over four years ago. A lot of community interaction, both through the Planning Commission and the City Council, including meeting with the school board, had many public hearings on the development. In between the approval of the tentative map and moving to the final map, we continue to work with the regulating agencies as far as the Riparian Enhancement/Creek area is concerned. They had a requirement that we create a standalone parcel so that that portion of the land could never be developed in perpetuity, that essentially it is protected, which we were always in agreement with. But so that is one of the conditions. Number two, obviously, was the discussion we had at the approval at the council level, creating the standalone parcel for the public park. That was one of the, I'll say, kind of final negotiating points with the council, is that they felt strongly that they wanted to see a park on the south end of town. And we listened to the community, listened to the council, and we obliged with that. The last portion of it is the reduction in the multifamily unit, as indicated by Kevin. The primary driver of that is financing. We had a fantastic opportunity with the introduction of what they called the disaster relief credits. Essentially, the state allocated more funding resources to Sonoma County due to the wildfire destruction that has occurred. The state and the federal government both see the need to invest in these areas. And in order to be competitive for that financing, we needed to make an adjustment downward in the amount of units. And based on, you know, if you look at the overall tenor of the entire project approval process, I always felt like it was very positive. The one question was always on the amount of units that were being proposed, so that we felt like a reduction, if anything, would probably be more supported than if we came back and asked for an increase. So that's really the outline of it. As Kevin indicated, this is the final process for us to move forward and start commencing construction on this great development, which we look forward to completing.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Paula, would you like to start? Vice Mayor? Councilmember Bagby?
I just, you know, want to thank Jake and commend staff for, you know, this is a model of staff working with, our staff working with the developer and the developer listening to, you know, the needs and the requests and being really responsive to our needs. And it's just, it's a, it's a great partnership. I'm just very appreciative. Looking forward to moving, moving forward.
Thank you, Councilmember Bagby. Jake, I just have a couple of quick questions. You answered my question about lowering the number of the total units as to why. So that, that helps a lot. I was curious as to why that was going on. That makes sense. And I appreciate your answer on that. The later date for subdividing the, for the single-family residences, can you explain that, how or why you, as a developer, would remove all those and not be prepared for putting those in versus, you know, having it laid out ready to go so that everything's done at once?
Sure. And I appreciate the question, Mr. Mayor. As you know, this is a substantial-sized project. We've got many units, different unit types. And so, again, it goes back to, one, timing and financing. And so when we're working on a development of this size, it's virtually impossible to come out and just build all the units at one time. And so, looking at having the first portion of the apartment development financed and being able to come in, bring all of the infrastructure, including the build-out of Foothill Road and what is currently labeled as Road A, we will be naming that road in the future. But essentially, bringing in all the circulation, all the utilities, the electric, the sewers, all of the wet utilities, building out that along with having to do the Riparian Enhancement Zone upfront, including the improvements along the northern section of the development. So really, from a phasing perspective, it makes more sense to start on this end of the development. Number two, we're, we're working on figuring out the exact financing for the single-family homes as well. By deferring the recrodation of the individual lots on that portion of the development allows us to put off the development of the streets, the curb, the gutters, and so forth, until we're ready to move in and actually start construction on those. Our goal and our plan is we're currently working on the financing of the single-family homes. As we gear up to start construction on the multifamily, we believe we'll have a plan in place by the end of this year to start construction, then moving into the single-family homes. At that time, we'll bring back the, that portion of the subdivision map. This is actually kind of a common practice for some developers. We've done it multiple times in the past where if you get a large subdivision approved, you'll bring it forth in phases with the recrodation of the map. It's just a function of, like I said, timing and financing.
Jake, and Councilmember Cruz, I'm sorry I skipped you. I apologize. Please go ahead before I finish. I appreciate it.
Yes, I just wanted to say thank you to Jake and the staff also. This has been a nice project to follow. And I appreciate your respect for nature and for flora and fauna in that particular area of Cloverdale, that it's so beautiful. So, thank you, Jake, and thank you for your support to the community.
And city leadership. I think that we all accomplished a great thing by working together, listening to each other. It always wasn't perfect. You know, there was always some hard questions, but I, I do appreciate everyone's commitment to this development. It's been a long time coming, and we're really excited to get started.
All right, Jake, I have a couple more quick questions for you, if you don't mind. You answered part of it on the, with what you were saying earlier as well regarding the sidewalks and everything that you were going to be putting in, that you'd do the single-family housing sidewalks and all that at a different time as the financing came in. How about the infrastructure grading, things like that? Because the park is located up in that area, and I'm nervous that the park would get forgotten, but your housing would go in. And so I want to, I want to, you know, just be, I want you to make me feel better that, you know what, that park's going to, going to go in, or your infrastructure's going to be there. And we're really moving forward with the entire project, not the first portion and, and then leaving it without. Does, does that make sense? And I hope it didn't sound rude. I just want to, I want you to make me feel warm and fuzzy about it.
I appreciate the question. So there's two, kind of a two-part answer there. The first is, part of the subdivision agreement that you are approving tonight requires us to dedicate the park parcel. So if, in fact, your fear was recognized and we didn't do the park, at the least, the city would then own the 1.6 acres with the park, with the approved park on it. The second part of it is, we've invested a whole lot of time, money, and effort to, to build this development out. We now have it approved, and we're moving forward with the financing aspect of it. In order to build the park from a timing perspective, it makes the most sense to build that out with the first phase of the SFRs, or you're going to have a kind of standalone little patch of, not little, but 1.6 acre patch up at the top without the proper infrastructure and neighborhood to support that development. So I guess going back, one would be, have security and knowing that this, this will become city property as the recrodation of the map. And then number two is, when we move forward with that portion of the development, we will, we will build it out. That park design had, we've continued to work with that with a subcommittee through Kevin and with the city. And my understanding, that's been met with, I won't, I don't know if it's been approved, but I know that we've made some alterations in order to appease and address what comments were there, and it's really come together nicely.
Thank you, Jake. Any more comments from City Council before we open it up to public? Seeing none. And anyone in the audience here in front of me who want to speak on this item? Okay, then we'll move on to the attendees. See Betha, please. Superintendent McLean, can you hear us?
I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to take this opportunity to make a comment because the, I came to Cloverdale after the initial proposal of this development. And while I respect the fact that the developer may have worked collaboratively, collaboratively with the council, I want to clarify that the process with the school district has not yet been collaborative. The development will likely bring hundreds of students to our district, and the developer has not been able to produce evidence of a will-serve agreement with the, my predecessor or with the district. And while I was not the superintendent at the time this development was initially approved, my predecessor asserts that he did not sign or provide a will-serve letter. The only provision I'm aware of at this point that the developer has made is to tell the district that they will grade or do heavy equipment work on the property that is adjacent, is an undeveloped piece of property we purchased, because we don't know how we will house all of the students who are potentially going to enroll. While we welcome them, we do believe that all developers should be making a contribution to the impact that their development will bring to the city. So I just want to assert that and make sure that it's accurately represented from the position of the school district.
Thank you, Superintendent. No more public comments. I'll actually give Jake a chance to respond, if you'd like, Jake.
I'll just say, I appreciate the comments. As noted, you know, we will pay our fair share of the developers' fees. I think everyone's aware, we have had a lot of conversations with the school district. We continue to keep the door open to discuss more than just grading. I, you know, without getting into the weeds of all the conversations that we've had, but, you know, I've done a lot of work with the district. In fact, I even presented to the school board at a public meeting when you guys were going through your labor negotiations. And so I've always been open to discussing what we can do there. The one thing that we have requested is to please see a plan, a scope of work, and a budget. And perhaps we can then sit down and discuss what we can and cannot do. But beyond that, as I said, we will be paying our fair share of our developer fees, and the, the phone is on and the lines of communication are open. We look forward to working with you and with the city to bring this development forward.
Okay, seeing no further public comment, I'll bring it back to the dais. Councilmember Cruz, would you like to go first, since I forgot you last time? Vice Mayor? Okay, I'll, I'll just say, the comments I have, I'm, I'm a little bit nervous because when someone says that we'll at least get the land for the park, I feel like the park is not going to be going in. I feel like the infrastructure and all of that part... Jake, can you hear us? I'm sorry. I'll, I'll speak up. I don't know, with these microphones and this Zoom, it's horrible. I, I get nervous when there isn't direct answers as to, yes, that park is going to be going in, yes, this is going to be happening. And I know that it's, it's, it's based around investing, and I, and I get that part of it. But when we need a park because we're bringing in a large apartment complex, the dirt doesn't do anything for us, the lack of infrastructure doesn't do anything for us, and I would hate to see a developer come in, do that part, and leave. And I'm not saying you would, I've just, that's been done in other cities. And so I have to, as mayor, look out for our community as well. And I'm, I'm looking for more from you that would say, yes, we are going to get that park in there, not, we are going to dedicate the dirt to you. And, and so it makes me nervous that, that might happen in the future, that we'll end up with the first third, and then that's it. So I, I know you can't speak to anymore, Jake. I know that we've been through a lot when I was on the school board and had a lot of discussions. And so I really hope that you step up with your company and your, and your investors and do what you've said you were hoping to do, and really make the best for our community and make it come to, come to fruition for us. Councilmember Cruz, I see a hand went up. Please go ahead.
Yes, you know, I, I would like to say, Mr. Mayor, that Mr. Lingo has been one of the best people to work with in this town. Very reputable, very trustworthy, and I don't see him running away anywhere, especially since he's going to have a house on the hill. So thanks, Jake, and I know that this part will come through.
Through the chair, I have a question for the city staff. Don't we collect a bond on a project like this? And if the project's not done, or if it's left, as the mayor pointed out, wouldn't we have a bond to, that we could hold back to do those improvements?
That, that's a great question, Councilmember Paula, and, and you're absolutely right. Included in the packet tonight is a subdivision improvement agreement. And tied to the subdivision agreement, improvement agreement are a, a set of bonding agreements for carrying out the necessary improvements to support the project as defined on the final map. So there's a, there's a, there was an engineer's estimate of the improvements necessary to serve the project. Those estimates were vetted by our city engineering development team. And, and again, those, those cost estimates were based on the improvements necessary to serve the final map. I think the, the question that you're asking, Councilmember Paula, relates to improvements of the park site. And there, there's, there, there is not a condition of approval requiring the developer to improve the park. There was a condition of approval requiring the developer to dedicate the parkland. With that said, what staff has been discussing with the developer is, if the developer is, would let, you know, would, would plan to move forward with improvement of the park, which we've certainly, as staff have, have advanced that idea, and I think the developer supports that idea, that it, the developer would be subject to some credits against park impact fees to offset the, the cost of the, the park improvements that would otherwise, that would, the developer would be provided. So that's kind of the mechanism by which we are addressing the, the park improvements of the land dedicated for the park would be the, the, the park impact fees. If, for instance, I think it's a legitimate concern that the mayor brings forward that the park, if the park was not developed, you know, how does that get, how, how does that get developed, how would the park get developed? That would really be subject to the future phases of the development when the, and the payment of those park fees, it would, you know, either be incumbent upon that developer at the time or the city to use those park fees to make those improvements. Granted, with the multifamily portion, if that, say, from a timing perspective moves forward, there's not going to be a mechanism necessarily to credit for the park at that time. So that, you know, there'll be, there'll be park fees that will be, you know, collected at the time of a building permit or certificate of occupancy. So there, there is a mechanism for addressing park improvements, and it's really through, through the fees. But I think that is an area where if, if, if council sees fit, you, you could condition, I think, the project to improve the park. But that area includes the, the, the street improvements to serve the park. Those were not included in the subdivision improvement agreement because it wasn't part of the improvements necessary to serve the portion of the, the project that was going to be developed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And no, no disrespect, Mr. Mayor, but, you know, Jake has done a few projects here in Cloverdale, and I think his integrity is, is pristine. And, and I just am tickled about the family apartments project that was done and how wonderful that project is. And, you know, I'm sure if, if Jake says something's going to happen, he's going to make sure it happens. So if that gives you any comfort.
I'm sorry, I'm, I seem to always be the, the one that sees it from a half-empty point of view, or, or leery, like you're buying a, buying a new car. You know, you always want to figure out everything and don't trust anyone around you. And that's, you know, my own, my own issue, I guess. And none taken, that's why we're here. So Councilmember Bagby or Cruz, anything else? Okay.
I think that, you know, our staff have really crafted an airtight deal, and I really appreciate the relationship with this particular developer and, and hopefully we can do projects together in the future to provide, you know, homes for our local families. This is a win-win. So thank you, Jake, for all your work on this. And thank you to staff, again, for, you know, creating an airtight deal moving forward. It's appreciated.
And I, and I want to make sure that I say it this way. I, I like this project. It's, it's a very nice project. It's done well. It's developed well. I just get nervous when I see residents removed, a whole, a whole section or style of housing removed, and a park not finished on a final map. The, if the final map had those on it, I wouldn't be hesitating or asking any questions. So I, I like the project as it is. I appreciate Mr. Lingo listening to our community, lowering the size of the project, like we discussed, his willingness to work with the, the school district. I, I appreciate him going back to the drawing board with them and, and being willing to do more than grading, like he just stated. That's, that's great. You know, he's listening to our community and trying to work well. And so I don't want him to take it the wrong way. I just want, it just, I'm, I'm real leery when I don't get solid answers. And so that's where I'm coming from. So...
So, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and introduce the resolution, the first resolution by title only.
And Councilmember Paula?
Yes.
Before you do that, I know we were talking about potentially...
Strike that.
We were talking about potentially amending one of the conditions. Just to clarify, and hopefully we're, we're getting something that, I know the developer mentioned already. But I don't know, Kevin, if you want to just talk about that, that condition related to the designation of the, of the, of the park.
Can you speak into the mic? I see Jake can't hear very well.
All right, I apologize. Kevin's going to go through just potentially a slight amendment to the condition related to the designation of the park, just making clear regarding the, it's not just designation, but also I think the dedication, I think you mentioned, Mr. Lingo, of the, of the actual of that, of that parcel to the city. So I know Kevin was going to bring up that, that, that condition, because I think the condition simply says designated as park space, but I think it was missing the dedication portion of it. Just to be, just to be clear, I know you mentioned prior to the recrodation of the map, so we wanted to make sure to have that in there. And I know, Mayor, that, that's something that you were mentioning as well as, that you were interested in.
And, Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question?
Please, go ahead.
Sorry, is that, is that updating the attachment to the Bumgarner final map, or is that updating Resolution One, or the Attachment One Jose?
Hang on a sec. It's, it's amending... It's Resolution, it'd be Resolution...
Question being made as amended for both of those resolutions, or just one or the other?
It, it's going to be a new condition added to Resolution One, which, the way that we added these amendments was we have a separate resolution. We thought that would be cleaner and easier. So we would be amending, we would be adding a new condition. Or we, we, well, either way, we, we're amending Condition Seven. We didn't, we didn't amend the previous resolution. We added a new resolution, so that's where we landed to make it simpler. So I think the way we would do it is we would add a condition to Resolution One, and I can read it off when you guys are ready.
And, and let me, let me...
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to be clear.
Mayor, talk to the back end. Resolution One...
Which is amending Resolution, the original Resolution 0792020, approving the amended tentative map. It, the, the final whereas is intended to amend the conditions of approval that, that was, you know, originally adopted by council to, again, reduce the number of lots. That's, that's item one under that. Whereas, item two, under the final whereas, is amending condition of approval number 28. What we're recommending is, is council amend that whereas to include a number three, amending condition of approval number seven, indicating that the developer shall dedicate the parcel of land, parcel five, as a public park and, and, and public street to serve the, the park and adjacent development.
At the time of recrodation.
Go ahead, Jake, so I think you guys need to clarify.
I'm sorry. If you actually look at the subdivision agreement, the language is already in there.
On page... 12, Section 22.
It states, "Developers shall include the following language in the dedication clause on the final map, or any separate instrument conveying title to the city. The real property described below is dedicated in fee for public purposes." Foothill Boulevard Street Day, and then the parcel for the, the hillside and a public park, a conservation easement for the parcel as shown on the final map, titled Bumgarner Ranch. So if you want to include it in there, you can, but I believe that this is all handled with the subdivision agreement, which you're approving with the current resolutions.
And we, we don't disagree with Mr. Lingo, I think, because council's really taking two actions tonight. One is approving the amended tentative map, which is Resolution One. We're just recommending that council, in order for consistency, is to add that additional language, just amending condition number seven to identify dedication of the property. I think that, that, that will clarify that you're, that the developer is responsible for dedicating that, that area to the city. And consistent with that action, the, the resolution approving the final map also approves the subdivision agreement, which contains the same language that Mr. Lingo just read. So I think all we're doing is just ensuring consistency between approval of the tentative map and approval of the final map.
Thank you.
Move forward. Thank you.
Dedication of this, does that count towards the park fees, or is this in, on top of the park fees?
The dedication of land is a requirement of your general plan, so there, there's no fee credits for the dedication. Where there would be fee credits is for the improvements, and, and that's where the staff would work with the developer on determining the value of those improvements against the, the, the impact fees adopted by council.
Thank you, David. Joe, Councilmember Paula, you want to continue?
Well, yeah, I'm gonna let, I'm gonna go in as amended. A resolution of City Council, the City of Cloverdale, approving the final map to subdivide approximately 28.42 plus or minus acres of land located at 28195 and 28193 Old Redwood Highway, APN 117-040-053 and -084, commonly known as the Bumgarter Ranch subdivision into seven parcels, authorizing the city manager to accept the easements dedicated by separate deeds and approving the subdivision improvement agreement and associate improvement securities.
Second, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Councilmember Bagby. Paul, please.
Councilmembers Paula?
Aye.
Bagby?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Aye.
Mayor Lands?
Aye.
And, Mayor, remember, if, if staff would like to request that you adopt the resolution approving the...
Thank you, Kevin. The, the staff would also like the council to consider adoption of the resolution approving the amended, amended tentative map as well.
So...
Go ahead, Councilmember Bagby. Go ahead.
City of Cloverdale, City Council, resolution of the City of Cloverdale City Council, amending Resolution 079-2020, approving an amended tentative map and amended conditions of approval for approximately 28.42 plus or minus acres of land located at 28195 and 28193 Old Redwood Highway, APN 117-040-053 and -084, to the planned development, or PD, zoning district.
And Councilmember Bagby, if you're okay, as amended to include additional...
I believe when I said "so moved" with your previous description, I was covered. As amended, makes you happy.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Bagby?
Aye.
Paula?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Aye.
Mayor Lands?
Aye.
Thank you Jake, we appreciate your presentation. I look forward to working with you, and I hope you prove me wrong on everything that I am leery about.
Thank you, Mayor, and speaking of, we really appreciate it.
We're going to work with you all as well. Take care.
Moving forward, new business. G1 mid-year financial report for fiscal year 2122.
Thank you Mayor, members of council, we're really delighted to bring this forward tonight. This is a mid-year financial report for the current budget year, fiscal year 2122. Our finance director, Suzy Holmes, has prepared a presentation that is going to provide you kind of an overview of our major funds. This mid-year budget report is really intended to provide council a kind of a check-in on the budget. And when I say the budget, the budget meaning that all of the encompassing budgets that are included in the city's budget, which includes the general fund, the various enterprise funds, as well as a whole host of special funds, including your landscape lighting and assessment districts. It's important to note, as you receive the presentation tonight, that this is kind of that six-month check-in, to see where we are, both from a revenue perspective, but also an expenditure perspective. You know, again, noting that, you know, the fiscal year starts July 1 and ends June 30. This mid-year report covers the period from July 1 to December 31. So with that said, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to our finance director, Suzy Holmes, and Suzy's going to walk us through a PowerPoint presentation.
Thank you Jill. Mayor, councilmembers, in your agenda packet tonight, there was the mid-year report, and staff just wanted to take the time tonight to touch on some of the highlights. The general fund revenue that has been received versus budget at December 31 is at 39%, and this is completely normal and expected based on the timing of the major tax and fee payments that we received, and typically received. When we, whoops, when we look at the general fund revenues that have been received, you can, you can see better than I can. You can see that the charges for service come in at 69% of budget, and I just wanted to let you know that the main driver of that has been our building and planning fees, specifically conditional use permits, lot line adjustments, design reviews, and plant checks. And I also wanted to kind of tout that most of those revenues have come through our new Open Gov, our new online permit processing. When we look at the property taxes that have been collected for the period of December, or July through December, for the past few years, you can see that for the last few years, there's been a significant increase each year, and that this year we've kind of flatlined. When we look at sales tax, you can see that it took a significant drop in 1920, and it's working its way back up. We've almost met our 1819 actuals. The business licenses, you can see that there's a dramatic decrease there. That is based on a new, our new processes of collecting business license. We were doing it internally and billing in December, and now we are outsourcing it, and the billing is done in January. I expect that that is going to be back up, probably not the same as last year, maybe a little less, but it's going to be close, and I don't expect that that's going to be a huge decrease. So general fund expenditures, that's another way that you want to look at to see where your revenues are versus your expenses. Our expenses are actually in the general fund at 40%, and our revenues were at 39%, so we're very close there. The transfers out, where you can see that there's actually zero year-to-date, those are typically journal entries that we do at the end of the year. We're going to cover things like a deficit in the airport fund. We're going to cover specific things that are calculated at the end of the year. So that's why you're seeing a zero there for now. I expected that we will be coming in at budget. Also, parks and facilities and maintenance is typically the majority of our expenses in that line item are going to happen in spring and early summer months. So this is just a chart that shows our expenditures by type. You can see that our wages and benefits are 66% of the expenses that we've incurred at December 31, and that our contract services are at 27%. And then there's, you know, just little things going on, but those are the two major categories. When we look at the expenditures by department, we see exactly what we would expect to see, that police and public safety, the expenses there are at 57%, and city administration is at 30, and then parks and planning are each at 6% each.
And Suzy, can you share with council what departments constitute city administration?
Oh, of course I can, sorry. And I even have that on my note, and then I decided I didn't need my notes anymore. But city administration includes city council, city manager, city clerk, city attorney, risk management, general services, and finance. So it's essentially city hall. So, talking about the general fund, fund balances. These are the balances that we see, and you can kind of see that we're increasing our general fund balance again. You're going to hear from our auditor at the next meeting, and I expect that he's going to tell us exactly what we're seeing here, that there was an increase in the general fund, fund balance. I wanted to take a minute to just kind of talk about these three different assignments. So we have unassigned fund balance, we have committed, and we have assigned balances. Unassigned balances are funds that we can use, and they are not, they're not assigned for any specific purpose. Committed funds are amounts that can be spent for specific purposes and are determined by formal action of the city council. And assigned are intended to be used by the government for specific purposes. If we look at this slide, you can see what we currently have in each of these. Our fund balance, we have a policy that dictates how we will assign the funds once an audit happens. The fund balance by, let's see. This fund balance represents a 52% reserve balance, which is very good. But if you take away all of the assigned or committed funds, then you have a 29% reserve, which is still right close to where you would want to be. Between 25 and 35 is ideal for your reserve balance. The city's adopted surplus policy states that the emergency reserve of 30% of any surplus up to $100,000 will be set aside, so that we will have an 8% in the emergency reserve undercommitted there. So, once the audit has been completed, we'll be moving likely $100,000 into that emergency reserve. The contingency reserve, the next item below, the emergency reserve there, that's currently at 1.4 million, says that any remaining surplus will be used in this line item to keep our reserves at 17%. 17% is 1.6 million, so we will be putting $200,000 into this line item once the audit has been completed. And then any remaining surplus will be allocated to the assigned, and it goes in a specific order, and the order is listed there for you to see. And typically, it's 5%, it is, sorry. It's depreciation plus 5%. That's what it is. And we try to keep everything at those levels, and that's what we keep moving, moving into those accounts each year, until, once you've gone through that list, then the rest will go into the unreserved. Talking about public works and the revenues related to the public works department, the revenues are expected as we would expect based on the timing and the transfers. So the transfers, again, are typically going to happen at the end of the year, not all of the transfers, but some of the transfers. And then also, the road maintenance and rehab, that is typically one period behind when we get to December 31. The expenditures are also typical for reporting through December 31. The majority of the expenditures on public works are budgeted for late spring and early So the water enterprise fund, when we look at the water charges, they're at 49%, but this is because we are charging the shortage surplus. As you will see in a later slide, the penalties are still not allowed, and penalties are still not allowed according to SB 998, so the governor has passed this, saying that we cannot charge nor disconnect water. I don't expect that to change before June 30. And the city, oh, okay, the city recently applied for and received grant funds in the amount of $32,000 for customers who had outstanding water bills for the specific billing period of March 4, 2020 through June 15, 2021. The grant was received and the letters were mailed, letting the customers know that they had benefited from the grant. The letter further asked customers to call city hall and make payment arrangements for the remaining amount, and also included other contact information for other relief opportunities that they may be eligible for. The total charges for service are down approximately 10% over 2021 in the water enterprise. And then if you look at the charges without the surplus, you can see that the decrease is about 20%, and it's, it's down, so the 2021-22 total charges are 1.6 million, and 2021 was 2 million. So there's a, almost $500,000 difference between, between the charges. But that's being made up by that water shortage, so surcharge. The expenditures in the water department, let's see. In the construction vehicle, outlay, and the overhead, you can see that it's at 11% of budget, and that's because we haven't started some of the big projects, including Cherry Creek replacement design, and effluent pump rehab, transfer pump, water savings program, and a meter replacement. So, I expect that by the end of the year, those will all be back up to where we expect them to be. Again, in the water department, 47% of the charges are salaries and benefits, 31% are services and supplies, 21% is that service, and then there's capital outlay of 1%. In the sewer department, talking about the revenue is a little different in that the sewer is on a fixed rate, and it's not based on the number of units of water that's being used, except for commercial customers. So we have a little bit more consistent charge going on here. And again, you can see that the charges for service remain fairly steady in the sewer The expenses here. Services and supplies, construction and overhead are throwing off the percentages of the sewer enterprise. There are large projects that have been budgeted, including a SCADA system installation and a biosolids removal project, which are expected to begin and/or be completed prior to the year-end. Also, a new sewer system inspection and leak testing project was just recently completed by National Plant Services, and that was after the December 31 reporting date. The major expenses in the sewer fund, of course, are salaries and benefits at 60%, and services and supplies at 34. We kind of have a recurring scenario going through here. And then the airport enterprises, the revenue that has been received, the major thing is the grants, that's the offset. And we haven't received the grant because we haven't restarted the project yet. And the project is an infield drainage improvement project that we're, have budgeted, and so when we look at the expenses, we should also see that offset because we haven't started the project. the project. And then that's it, unless there's questions.
Oh, thank you. Susie, I, I think it's slide three on the general fund revenue. Year-to-date, I'm sorry, the first column, nine, nine million, 200, I'm sorry, nine million, 2,000, that's what we're budgeting. We're 39%. Are we comfortably going to hit this mark?
Yes.
I mean, we're down 6 million if I'm doing my math correctly.
We are, we're at 39%. We've received, which is fairly typical because our taxes are typically one period behind. We're not going to get the, the, all of our revenues for December, in December, right? So some are going to come in January, some are going to come in February, and some might even come as late as March. So there's, there's this delay, which is what's causing it. But we are, I do expect that we are going to meet or exceed that number.
And I'm sorry, I missed it. Did you already explain what the overhead and administration for 1 million is?
The overhead and administration is the, the charge that the general fund charges to the enterprise funds based on...
Okay.
Okay. Good.
You know, this is a pretty good report and I'd really like to digest it a little. So I'll probably be calling you next week, or David with some questions on it, okay?
Okay, great.
Councilmember Paula?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't really have any questions. It looks good to me. I'm happy to see that we are going to be able to put money back into the restricted reserves because, as we know, emergencies happen and we need to be positioned to address those. So, no, this is good and thank you for the report.
Sure.
Councilmember Bagby?
Oh, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, excellent report, Susie. And a mixture of, you know, it's not as bad as we might have thought it was going to be, as well as we, we definitely have areas of improvement and concern. So, yeah, this is, this is very helpful in preparing for the upcoming budget and priority setting that we have. So thank you very much for a clear and concise overview of all of the areas we need to be concerned about. I appreciate it.
Councilmember Cruz?
I just want to say thank you, especially because it's very visual and it's going to help our constituents understand where the money is and where the money is allocated. So thanks again, Susie and staff, and I look forward to our priorities meeting.
And I'll echo what everyone's saying. Thank you for all your hard work on this. I, I will say the one thing that made me laugh is 2021, when we were all locked into our houses, our cannabis tax was skyrocketing. I thought that was, that was, I actually laughed out loud, I apologize. So, but no, this is a great report. I appreciate it. I like to see us succeeding versus failing. So, thank you.
And Mayor, I just want to mention, if you're inclined to, to open up for public comment.
Absolutely, absolutely. Seeing none in our audience? Oh, yes, sir, please.
And I'd like to make a few comments about Attachment 2, which is called the Draft Midyear Report, and it's on pages five and six. And it, it shows two, two charts. The first chart shows the, the revenue to the end of December. And the second chart shows the expenses through the end of December. But there's one chart missing, and it's been missing since 2018, and it's called the Landscape and Lighting District Fund Balances. And what's important about this report is it shows how much money each zone had at the beginning of the fiscal year. And there is no other report which shows that. And I think it's important because the Landscape District is a special assessment district and this, this money in this district belongs to all the homeowners. And I think the city has a responsibility to account for our money. And this is the only, as I said, the only public record of how much money we have in the bank, basically. Also, when I was listening to this report, I was wondering, you know, this is a special assessment money and it can't be commingled with city money, so I don't know if any of our money is in these reports that were up, up here. So, why, another reason that this, this report to me is so important is that when, when we, we sit down, we go through the engineering report, we're always looking at, well, are we going to make the 25% reserve? Well, if you had this chart, you can see, of course, it's, you got to go back a year in the engineering report, but you can, you can check. You can see, did the city do a good job on estimating what that is going to be? Also, what I kind of do with this information is I take the reserve balance, I get a copy at the end of the year, I get a copy of the audited financials, I, I, I look at the cottages, which, which is the revenue versus the expense. And if there's any minus or plus, I add it to the beginning balance and that shows me what the beginning balance for next year is supposed to be. Well, sometimes it doesn't work out just right. 2017 and, 2018 and 19, there was a difference of $1,175. 1920, we're back even again. 2021, there's a $729 difference. And in 2122, I don't know because I never got the information from the city. I calculated that our ending, or our beginning revenue balance for 2122 is somewhere in the neighborhood of $69,800. It has grown over the years from 2015, 16. It was only $17,700. Next year, 19,300. Next year, 27,200. Then it grew to 31,048, 44,800, 45,600. And now I calculate, it's at 69,700 or so. And I, I asked two times if I could get this number and I, I haven't got it yet. But I wouldn't have to ask if it were part of this financial plan. So hopefully you will add it to the mid-year financials. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
We can definitely add the fund balance to this re, mid-year report. I didn't put it in here and I should have for Mr. Rottolini. The other reports that we were looking at, the other charts, did not include LNL money because we were only looking at general fund in those. And that, they are, he's correct that they are completely separate and the accounting is done completely separate for those.
Thank you for the clarification on that.
Can we provide Dan with a copy of that now, mid-year?
Is that possible for Dan to get a copy of the mid-year?
Lighting and Landscape District.
For LNL?
Oh, yeah, he can. And next, next, at the next meeting, we will have the final numbers that are audited. So I would prefer to wait until we have audited numbers so that I'm not giving him something and then have it be $1,100 different by the time the audit comes through.
Did you catch that, Dan?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Susie, appreciate it. Let's see, see where we are. See any other, I don't see any other hands in our attendees, so I will close public comment, bring it back to the dais. No other comments here. Councilmember Bagby? You don't need any direction, correct?
We, staff's request was just to counsel to accept the report tonight.
Great. Okay, moving forward to G2. Sustainable Solutions Turnkey Program for Energy Efficiency Projects.
Can you bring David Carter in as a panelist?
Mayor and councilmembers, I'll, I'll start on this before we turn it over to our presenter this evening. What we're, what we're bringing forward really is the, an update on the preliminary feasibility assessment that, that the council authorized staff to work with the PG&E's Sustainable Solutions Turnkey Program to evaluate energy upgrades in city facilities that would generate savings in terms of our, our utilities. This effort has been ongoing now for nearly a year from, from its inception. And what, what the presentation is going to give you tonight is kind of an overview and update on that effort. In addition, as we, as we were engaged in, in evaluating the projects that would generate energy savings, it was brought to our attention that there's an opportunity to look at a water meter upgrade project that could also generate long-term cost savings to the city. And we're going to give you a little bit of overview tonight on that project. Most specifically, what we're asking is if council is supportive as to execute, authorize the city manager to execute a change order to the investment-grade audit work, which would enable us to cover the cost of purchasing meters. And that, that, that change order would only be necessary if, if the council decided in the future not to move forward with the project. Because otherwise, the meter, the meters would be financed as part of the, the, the project financing. And so we wanted to make sure we were transparent with bringing this proposal forward. And I think for, it, it'll be more clearly explained as David Carter, the, the staff member at PG&E that Ben has been working closely with on this project and his team at Centrica, when he presents the overview of the, the, the work that's been performed to date. So with that said, David, I'd like to kind of turn it over to you. We've, we've been meeting, we were meeting almost regularly, weekly with David and his team, really providing, you know, updates and going through the, going through all of our facilities to look at opportunities for upgrades. And we've compiled a real healthy list of opportunities for the, for this, for the city council to consider whether we want to move forward. And David, I'll go ahead and turn it over to you to go ahead and present those to council this evening.
Thank you, David, and good evening to the council. I'm going to try to share the screen here. I'm assuming everybody can see it. Can I get a thumbs up? Yes, I got a nod from Melanie, thank you. So, you know, David did indicate that we've been working on this project for the last year. We're in the midst of doing the investment-grade assessment, which the, the goal of that is to create and have a defined scope for a project that has not to exceed pricing as well as the savings that would be provided from that project. In looking at it in general, we, you know, we're trying to address utility costs and looking at the infrastructure, we've looked at, you know, equipment across the city and really trying to figure out how we can sort of refresh all the mechanical systems, upgrade all the lighting to LED. There were some things around the water treatment plant that, that we've looked at. And so to date, these are the types of measures that have been evaluated and are a part and parcel of the project that, you know, we're, we're looking to propose to the city once we complete the IGA. So it would be lighting, mechanical HVAC replacement, upgrading the balance of the streetlights that are city-owned, continuing to look at solar and storage, to continue to provide the ability to generate some of your, your own electricity. There's a water treatment plant aeration system that will help reduce energy use, and then EV charging stations. So these are all measures that we've gone through during the IGA and we're, we're sort of ready to move forward with it. And what we see and have anticipated is that, you know, based on your baseline energy cost of approximately $360,000, you know, we anticipate seeing a reduction of about 67% in those costs and then that the updated energy expenditure would be approximately $118. So this really does serve the city well. The one measure that came to light that we're working on and the one that's quote "in progress" is the idea of doing the citywide water meter upgrade. And we've done some preliminary evaluation, but the next step in the process is to test a sample of the meters so that we can validate or verify what the current water loss is, which would allow us then to do some calculations on revenue recovery that would be expected by replacing those meters. And so the, the change order that David Kelly referenced really has to do with purchasing the meters to do those samplings. And it's approximately 100 meters, a little, a little bit over 100 meters. And what would happen is, is that change order would provide that, that we would change out majority of those meters so that we can ship off the old ones for testing. The city would own all those meters and provided that the city moved forward with the project, that would just all roll into the project financing. And as David indicated, if the city chose not to move forward, the change order just represents the city would need to pay for those meters in the, in the testing process. And so I think the, the decision tonight is really a decision about accepting that change order. And this isn't my recommendation. I think that the city and the subcommittee have talked about this and I think I'm representing what they discussed is a authorizing the execution of that change order so that we can finalize the testing and bring this whole project to, to implementation. I think, any questions on that?
I just have one question for staff. If we do the change order and do the trial on the meters and choose not to move forward with the project, is that out of the general fund or is that going to be out of the water fund? How do, where does that $166,000 come from?
Really, it's, it's a discretionary choice, but I, I, I think we would, we would opt to incur that expense within the Water Enterprise because we, we already have a capital improvement program to replace meters. And in essence, we would end up with 100, you know, approximately 100-plus new meters. So in that sense, we, we would, we would still benefit because we, we, we would have these new, these new meters and, and, and that cost currently is borne by the Water Enterprise. And so I would expect that that cost would be, again, assuming council didn't move forward and we had to expense that, that item, it would be within the Water Enterprise budget.
Thank you, that answers it. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Bagby, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I, I, we, we, we reviewed this in Planning and Sustainability and I got to say that the numbers were, were really surprising, what a huge benefit, you know, some of these options really provide where our, our utility bill is concerned at the end of the month or the end of the year. But I wonder if the city manager would like to, again, you know, utilize his economics degree and on the subject of... degree on the subject of the, the current water loss and the need to, you know, really get a handle on that, especially in light of the previous report regarding our, our Water Enterprise Fund. I wonder if we could, you know, kind of talk about those two items in, in relation to one another.
Mayor, council, I'm happy to address that, that question. Included in the slide is a, is a table that talks about revenue recovery. And what the, what the, these new solid-state meters are intended to do is be a lot more accurate in terms of our water consumption. We, we currently annually conduct a water loss audit, and it reflects that there's, what's defined as a loss, a fairly significant loss. Some of that loss is, is lost due to, to leaks in the system that are unaccounted for. But, but a portion of that loss is attributable to, to meters that are old and outdated and inefficient. And so there's an opportunity through these, these new meter systems that are much more accurate and have less issues with their operation. They last longer, the, to, to better calculate the water usage by our customers. The, the other component to this that I think wasn't mentioned that's particularly valuable is a reference in the slide to the AMR or AMI technology. What, what that means is it's automated meter read. We've, we've been slowly implementing electronic registers to allow for fairly quick meter reading, but it, we've only been doing it, you know, kind of neighborhood by neighborhood. And we, we, the most, still the majority of our meters are manually read. So part of the cost savings with moving towards with AMR systems is the, the, the staff saving, you know, it's a time-saving function because basically they can be read in a much faster time than they are currently. And, and then that saves and frees up that staff time to do other things. The other component to this is, we, it can be done, you know, right, it's kind of, the first phase is moving to the AMI technology. But the recommendation is to kind of go from where we are today to AMR and then to AMI. AMI, in essence, allows for meter reads to be done electronically through connection of your meters to a cellular system, which then tabulates that water use data for customers to be able to use in real time. And so there's some real value there. We heard from our customers during the drought that they want kind of access to real-time data to be able to kind of help them, you know, better manage their water use. And, and there's, there's other components to this where there's alarm systems, there's other benefits to this technology that helps, you know, if you have a leak, for example, or you have high water use for a certain reason, it will, it will tell you that, inform you as a customer via email. And so, you know, we see this as kind of where, where the industry's going in terms of, you know, really helping, helping your, helping customers better manage their water use. So that's, that's kind of an ancillary component to it. But part of the testing that is proposed is really to help us better define that potential water loss in, and through the testing process so that we can really hone in on the, the actual estimated annual recovery and funds. So that, that's, you know, we, I really appreciate what the work that we're doing with PG&E and the team because they're, they're really trying to make sure and to validate the numbers. You know, we're not just coming in and kind of coming up with an estimate and saying, okay, this looks good, let's go forward. Let's actually test and validate it. And, and I think that's an important piece for, for us as a city, but also for our ratepayers and ultimately our residents.
No, no, I'm, it's good.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, please. So in our capital improvement, we had, I think we had budgeted $700,000 for meter replacement citywide. Was, was that correct?
And I, I believe that our CIP project, that sounds about right, Vice Mayor, in, in terms of the total number. And it, it, you know, again, that's a kind of a higher order cost estimate, it, you know, could, could be more than that. And I think when we were looking at this, it, in, through this program, it probably, to do a complete meter change, it probably is more than, more than what we estimated in our CIP. Kind of an ancillary comment to this program is that you get it all done at once and, and it's one project. And again, we think there's some real benefits to, you know, rather than doing it over multi, multi, multiple years and, and costs go up over time, to, to be able to accomplish a project, you know, in, in relative short order.
Well, that slide that was just up here, if we could put it back on the screen, for some reason, I'm seeing 380,000, was it?
The estimated annual recovery, 369,000?
Yeah, so it's almost like we would have them paid for in three years, it would pay for itself.
Right, and that's exactly the work that the, the team we've been working with will, will define for us, is the actual payback period for the project. So they'll, they'll do the testing, estimate, you know, what's the water savings or the water use, you know, as well as time savings, and actually put that in the context of, of a payback period. And, you know, council, as part of that discussion, would also have the ability to, rather than the finance it, is to say what, what, what do we may want to contribute, you know, upfront and, and then reduce those finance costs as well.
Right, okay, thank you.
Councilmember Cruz?
I'm not, I, I don't have any questions. I am familiar with this. It was quite, you know, discussed thoroughly, and I think if it's going to save us that much money, it's something we should go for.
Thank you. Suzy, please go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to add that also for the past two years and this fiscal year, we have budgeted $100,000 just for meters, and then we have our staff go out and replace them. So we would also be saving that portion of the budget as well if we did that and get it all done and, and not. Because by the time we get it done, it's going to be time to replace the first ones.
I, I have no comments other than this is a no-brainer to me, so.
Yes.
I'd like to open it up to public comment first. We can, I can't see anyone anymore, let me pull them up here. I see no hands and no one in our audience, so we'll bring it back to the dais.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer the item unless, if we're, if we brought it back to?
Please go ahead, Councilmember Bagby.
Happy to. A resolution of the City Council, the City of Cloverdale approving the, approving to forego standard procurement processes to contract with PG&E for the turnkey program, approving PG&E master agreement, investment-grade audit, IGA, work order approving supplemental documentation as required during the IGA for funding evaluation and incentives for various energy and retrofit programs and authorizing the city manager to execute any associated agreements and applications.
Mayor, members of council, if I can, the, the resolution that Councilmember Bagby read was, was the original resolution that was adopted by council?
Oh, surprise!
So, we love it. What we're really just asking tonight is, so that resolution did authorize the original work order. We're just asking tonight that council make a motion authorizing the city manager to execute change order number one to the...
Hold on, I just, you know what, it's blocked by my, the thing on my iPad. Sorry, David.
That's perfect, Councilmember.
Well, you need a, a motion to approve the change order?
That's right.
Okay, so moved.
Okay.
Roll call.
I think Councilmember Cruz might have seconded.
Either one, Councilmember Cruz or Paula both seconded, so you can choose, Jill.
Councilmember Bagby.
Aye.
Councilmember Paula.
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter.
Aye.
Mayor Land.
Aye. Thank you all.
My apologies, we could have been out of here a minute earlier.
Okay, Subcommittee Items, Finance, Admin, and Police.
The next meeting, am I the chair on that or are you, Jim?
I'm not on that.
Thank you all, and I will share the screen, but you move on to the rest of your business.
Thank you, David, for sticking around tonight.
No worries. I agree.
Beautiful, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, our next meeting is March the 7th.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Planning and Sustainability.
Our next meeting is April 19. At our previous meeting, it was the previous presentation, so that's sort of the kind of thing we've been up to.
Thank you very much.
Public Works.
Mr. Mayor, the next meeting is March 22nd. At our last meeting, we did receive a presentation, and you'll be, the city manager will be talking about it, it's item N, the second paper clip, having to do with the Water Conservation Program that was presented to us.
Thank you. Joint City and Fire District.
February 14th meeting was canceled, is supposed to be rescheduled, we haven't heard from the district yet. David, do you have anything on that as of today?
Councilmember Cruz, I, I have not heard back from Chief Jenkins in regards to rescheduling our Joint City Fire School Subcommittee meeting. I'll, I'll follow up with, with the chief and see if we can't get a, confirm a date for our next meeting before the next regularly scheduled meeting in June.
Thank you. Joint City and School District?
Go ahead.
I can.
You're the chair. I didn't want to step on your toes.
Our next meeting is scheduled, as of right now, for March 21st. I believe that falls on their spring break again, so it'll be rescheduled. Last week, we had a ribbon cutting for all the new buildings. They were paid for through Measure H, and it was a great turnout, approximately 50 to 60 people, so it was great to see. The next one is the Homeless Community Advisory Group. Our next meeting is scheduled for March 8th. If people are available, there is a point-in-time count for the homeless on February 25th. If you want to get involved, please email me. We will be meeting at 5:00 AM Friday morning in the downtown. Aye, Subcommittee Reports? Moving on, Council Reports? They were received. Anything else, David, on that? No?
No further reports, Mayor.
Informational?
None, Mayor.
Legislative Reports, Letters of Support Opposition?
None at this time, Mayor.
City Managers, City Attorney Reports?
Cruz had her hand up.
I'm sorry, I apologize, Councilmember Cruz, I was looking at the screen.
No worries. I just want to remind everyone that there's a mattress recycling event this Saturday at the Citrus Fair, and please promote in your pages and tell your constituents. Thank you.
Oh, and, and the electronics recycling as well, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday at the Citrus Fair.
Yes.
Thank you all, I appreciate that.
City Manager? City Attorney?
No reports, Mayor.
Great. Status Update on Current Impacts to Water Supply?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll, I'll be brief on this item. It's just a, a brief update on the current drought and where the state is heading in terms of addressing how, how they anticipate responding to ongoing drought conditions. Just as, as a reminder, the, the city responded to the curtailment order that was issued by the State Water Resource Control Board in, in August. That curtailment order, you know, impacted our ability to, well, or at least required us to reduce our diversions from, from, from our wells to meet minimum health and safety standards. In response to that, we, we filed a petition that allowed us to increase our consumption from the minimum 55 gallon per day per person imposed by the curtailment order to 104 gallons per day per capita. And since that time, we also filed a petition defining our non-consumptive uses at, at our water treatment plant to, to address the, the use of, and the production of water that we use in the, in the production process at our treatment plant. That, that added another 5.8 gallons to our per capita day, daily calculation. So that, that really, you know, almost brings us up to about 110 gallons per day that we can, you know, produce under the, under the, under the curtailment order. But given the, the challenges associated with the curtailment order, the, the State Water Board is, convened this effort, they're referring to as the Russian River Drought Response Group Steering Committee. The purpose of this steering committee is, has been to, to seek an alternative to curtailment through a collaborative process or consensus-based process, maybe is a better way of saying it, amongst the stakeholders in the Upper Russian River. Included in your packet is a memo that provides an overview of that process. We've been keeping the Public Works Subcommittee updated with regular presentations and updates on that effort. Included in your packet is a, is a, both a memo and a presentation that reflects, you know, pretty, pretty, pretty close, real-time updates on that process. We're continuing to monitor that process very closely in anticipation of bringing forward a discussion item before the council as to whether council would like to participate, desires to participate in, in this, in this voluntary process or not, and to consider some alternatives. There is a preferred alternative at this time that's referred to as, as the conservation stages. It's better defined in Slide 8 of 11, and it kind of closely mirrors the water shortage stages set forth in your Urban Water Management Plan. And it's, it's kind of goals to set conservation stages or conservation levels based on stages of drought as defined by the, by the Steering Committee and, and, and in consultation with the state. So right now, we, we do see some, some benefits potentially to the city of participating in this versus curtailment, but it's a work in progress and ultimately we'll, we'll be bringing this to council more than likely sometime in April. And the purpose of the memo is really just to keep, ensure the council is apprised of this, this ongoing effort and, you know, ensure that your, your staff's keeping you up to date so that when we bring it forward, you, you know, you have the necessary background on how this effort has been, you know, developing through, through time.
Thank you, David. Status on COVID-19, the current emergency?
Mayor, councilmembers, don't really have any, any, any updates. You know, we, we continue to respond to, you know, the COVID-19 emergency in, in terms of, you know, addressing testing requirements for, particularly for our emergency personnel, but, but no other updates this time.
Thank you. Any future agenda items that any of the council members want to suggest? I see nothing from Councilmember Bagby. How about Cruz? Great. Our next, meeting will be adjourned, our next meeting is scheduled for, oh shoot, I don't have the date in front of me. Is it the 6th?
March 9th.
March 9th.
No.
March 9th.
March 9th?
Yep.
Yes. I'm sorry, March 9th at 6:00 PM. Thank you, meeting is adjourned at 9:44.